Welcome to the, this is October 28th, we're having the budget workshop for the town of Newmarket. And we want to open with the.
Sure. Just for the public and for everyone in attendance, what this is, is we're going to be reviewing various departments' budgets and hopefully either move on for the vote at the next council meeting for the budget, or make some changes, and we'll have that vote. The next step after that, as soon as the council approves the budget, it must be done by November 15th. At that point in time, the municipal budget committee begins its review. I did have, want to let the council know that there is already one change in your operating budget as proposed. We received our guaranteed maximum rate increases from the health trust, and it's going down, it's, the guaranteed maximum rate increase is actually a decrease from over this year. It's a negative 1.2 percent. And so, we're already going to be making a reduction in healthcare of $62,900. Water, we're going to reduce it by 45, I mean, sorry, water's going to be no reduction because of a change in employee's status. And sewer is going to reduce $12,500. When we get to that point, I'll let you guys know, but it's, so yeah, we're already going to see a reduction.
What were the numbers again, please?
629 for general fund, healthcare, so it's going to go from 658,000 down to 595. And then sewer's going to go from 118 to 106, and just rounding. And that, and again, that's great, I mean, that's a guaranteed maximum rate increase, which is a decrease. The first topic we're going to discuss is the capital, contribution to capital reserve funds. What the contribution to capital reserve funds are, is, this is where we put the money aside to do, and that is on page 52. And that is where we put the money to do various large capital projects. And I know the capital reserve committee requested a total of $1,276,654 to be placed in the capital reserve funds. And I recommended $560,400. And I think one of the things I want to explain is the difference. When we do the capital reserve plan, capital improvement plan, the contributions are, if we were going to do all those projects in one year. What I took into consideration is our level of capital reserves that we already have, which are high in a number of the capital reserve funds. And while it looks like we're only recommending $560,000 in projects, in all actuality, I'm recommending $1,052,100 in projects, because we already have a lot of the money in the capital reserve funds, and we're withdrawing those. It's $146,000 for a dump truck, a sweeper at 160, security upgrades at 15,000, Tiger Hose Company repairs for the building at 21,500, facade work on this building for 38,600, and a town hall furnace for 89,250. Radios are 45,000, and the cruisers at 45,000, as well as fire base radios at 20. So, is it, is it completely what was requested? No, but we're going to make a good dent into that project. At the same time, we're going to be replenishing the capital reserve fund so we can do it in the following year. Some of the changes that were made from my budget was, as Public Works, I did reduce that down to $100,000 from 156,000. Buildings and grounds was at 460,550, and I reduced that to 100,000. Roadway improvements, I left at 135. Stormwater management, I did reduce that down to 50. And the McAllen Dam, I left that at $50,000 as well. The fire department, I reduced from 261,000 to 50,000. Police vehicles, they requested 52,000, and I reduced that to 26. That is one where, as I talked to the chief, there is enough money in the police vehicle capital reserve fund to buy a cruiser outright for the next four years. So, we didn't need to put any more in, but we should put something in just in case the fluctuation in police cruiser line, the cost. Dispatch, same thing, had a, had a strong amount, so I reduced that from 23,466 to 10,000. The Veterans Memorial Trust, that goes into the trust for the proposed Veterans Memorial at 2,000. Master Plan, a revow, I eliminated that. The new contract that we signed with Municipal Resources, Inc., includes the revow. So, we no longer need to put that money aside. We do have money put aside. I'm talking with the assessors now, we're, he's going to recommend, and I'll recommend to council soon, that at the same time that we hire another consultant to do our utilities. Currently, we use the state's utility values when setting the tax rate, and they tend not to be as accurate as when you hire a consultant. So, I'm going to recommend that we do have a private entity come in and assess all our utilities, which are all the poles, all the wires, all the right-of-ways that they have over our land, to make sure that that's accurate. The next is for our 300th birthday. I recommended $2,000, I didn't put it in, but in 27, will be our 300th anniversary, we're putting money aside to get ready for that. The library's requesting $10,400, and the recreations at $15,000, that brings you to $560,400. If you look at this, this also reflects close to what I, on the revenue side, recommend withdrawing from capital reserve funds. May not, from fund balance. The reason why I do that is, if for some reason our fund balance isn't there, we're not going to hit the operational budget, but we'll hit a capital project budget. So, it's too often, a lot of municipalities use the fund balance to offset the increase in the tax rate, and you spike, you have a drop in the tax rate, and it spikes back up because you don't have the fund balance in the following year. This levels that out, and if you, for some reason you don't have the fund balance, the only time that that's happened recently, in recent times, is about, was during the Great Recession. If you have that problem, instead of laying off employees, or doing some kind of structural or program, programmatic changing, you just don't do a capital project that year, you postpone it. So, it doesn't hit the operations of the government that much. I will say, our fund balance is actually healthier than I anticipated. We're at 9 percent. Our rules have to say we have to be between 5 and 10, so we're actually at the higher end. So, if there's any, you know, we could probably, if we wanted to add to any of these, we could add a little, but, yeah.
From my standpoint, what I think I'd like to do is to go through each of these lines, and where, you know, where you start out with a proposed amount to be entered, and you've reduced it, you know, it'd be nice to sort of understand what items out of those that's represented in those numbers from the capital improvement program. What items are you saying are just going to happen at some different time point? What items you are unconvinced that need to happen at all in any time near? I think, I'd like to have more granularity about how, how, you know, and I appreciate that, I think it makes all the sense in the world if there's something that needs to be done now, and the money is in the capital reserve fund now, we should do it rather than wait for inflation to erode the value of our money. But I, I also want to make sure that I understand.
Yep.
Your thought processes.
No problem.
I don't know, are we taking questions from the?
I just wanted to ask that, are you taking?
Usually you don't, but as a committee member, you'd have to, you can sit up here. It's usually, it's not a public hearing, it's your workshop.
But we invited them here.
Yep.
I assume that they can.
Why don't you come to the microphone? Two things, I think Greg mentioned at one point to the CIP that you're going to try to add a line item to operating on small project maintenance.
There is.
Is that in?
It is in the budget.
Is it around 100 or something like that?
It's in there.
The other one was just, CIP is looking, and I appreciate Dale attending virtually all the meetings this year and everything, that was great. To make a long-term plan that makes sense. So, it's not just a year-by-year, how much money do we put in for this project? But, you know, bringing Greg on board, who actually seems to know a lot about this stuff like this, and building maintenance, and the fact that we're doing the schools and stuff like that, is to be able to start to look at whether it's roadways or buildings, and just not vehicles, as we, as we tend to do, as a long-term health of the community, plus the McAllen Dam and what happens with that. So, those were the only first two comments. Thank you.
Okay. So, so what would be the, am I on the right, page 52 is where we're.
Yep.
So, the original budget was amount requested.
Was 156,000.
And it was reduced to 100.
Yep.
And.
What, my reasoning? We are going to actually be purchasing $306,000 worth of vehicles this year. 156 reflected one truck. We already have the money in the capital reserve fund. I said, let's replenish it for the following year. Initially, they were going to purchase three trucks this year, we're actually going to recommend purchasing one from the fiscal, this current fiscal year. So, we're moving one up, and then two in the following. It's just to, this is just to contribute again for the following year.
Okay.
So, that's why there's a difference.
And there's enough to.
There is enough.
Enough to meet the schedule for the trucks as they need to be purchased. Okay.
Department head proposes that 156 doesn't necessarily take into account what we already have in fund balance.
Correct.
Yeah. But I, is that what was intended by these? I thought when they let, put in the number year-by-year going out of what was supposed to go in, I thought that represented a number that was supposed to reflect.
But it's not what we already have in.
They just don't respect fund balance currently.
My understanding is it's the cost of the project, here's the project, here's what we think it will cost. It isn't, it's not a statement as far as fungibility. So, if the CIP committee proposes, you know, whether it's department head or CIP, whatever it is, you know, we've got $250,000 in projects we want money for, there's no representation there if we already have 400 in, in capital reserve funds.
Okay.
For example.
Is that clear?
Public Works vehicle currently has $330,677 in the fund. By adding 100,000, we'll have 430,677. I'm proposing withdrawal of 306,000 the coming year, so there'll be money in there for the neck, the following year for another vehicle. There's always some money just in, just in case something comes up. Police is the one that I brought up. They have 222,259 in the capital reserve fund.
Holy moly.
A cruiser right now is about 50.
Just under.
Yeah, just under 50.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, well, it looks like I'm, I'm cutting the, I'm cutting the contribution, but it's not cutting.
Not cutting the project.
The project, the project is, and I think that was the, and I hate to use the term, but the last few years, the capital improvement committee sort of vilified me by, why'd you cut my budget? Like, the CIP.
And we didn't.
I'm not, I'm just, we have the money already.
Right.
I think looking at the balances is really critical. And I don't know if you guys have this sheet that we put together, but it starts on the left-hand side of what the current balance is.
This is the, it's this document?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's down, it's on page three. And just as a quick overview, if you look at that current balance column, which is B, the whole town has slightly under $4 million in capital reserves, of which a little over 50 percent is in water and sewer.
Yeah, we're actually higher than that now, we're a little under $5 million.
Okay. And if you think of some of these things separately, and we're just trying to get concepts of it, if you look at roadway improvements, we have $65,000 set aside as our total capital reserve. If we're going to be, if you want to spend 50 or 75,000 a year on improving roads around town, curb stops or things like that, then either you're going to have to fund it every year with 75 grand because you don't even have enough to make that, or you want to build that roadway thing perhaps to a half a million dollars, just picking a number over time, so you feel comfortable each year you can spend 100,000 on roadway and not make a new contribution, or just a replacement contribution to that, to build up some of these reserves.
Sure, may I comment on the roadway one? Because I want to clarify roadways.
Sorry, that was.
No, I want to clarify roadways, because it does say remaining balance is $65,000. However, we contribute 135,000, that's 65, so you're actually at 200,000. In addition, we use the money that we receive from the state, highway block grant, which is usually, I can't remember what it was last year off the top of my head, but it was, it was additional because the governor had a revised budget. Plus, we have another reserve fund, which is the $5 fee that we charge on. So, we, truthfully, we do about $300,000 to $400,000 in roadwork. It's just that, this is just the additional that we're using other revenue sources, we have other revenue sources in capital reserves.
Right, yeah. I would say in the case of roadways, and we've talked about this as a council, that oil is cheap. The work certainly needs to be done, the town's roads could use some work, so there's no reason to put money away, we should just do it as we generate funds in those, and not, and not refill the capital reserve fund until such time as we're kind of caught up and then wanted to use that to stabilize the company. I would understand it that way.
Yeah, and I would just think, I'm just saying, it's healthy, I think, to know what the reserve balance is, just not the ins and outs, as Steve is saying, because it's deceptive to say we're spending at least 200,000 or 1,500,000.
Counsel Weinstein.
Thank you.
So, for me, most of the capital reserve funds are pretty straightforward. The one where I get a little caught up is for the building improvement. And so, that's where, like, I'd like to maybe have some more clarification as to what projects we're going to, you know, we have, I don't have very much money, $243,000. I know we have, we're, we're doing some projects now, so I would love to see, like, a plan for that.
Yep.
Also, knowing that we're going to put this new line item in, you know, I think.
So, so for this coming year, the projects that we're proposing for the withdrawals, are we going to continue the security upgrade with doing the, which, you got it?
Community services.
Community service, you mean Public Works?
Nope.
Community center?
Community center.
Thank you.
Sorry.
The Tiger Hose Company needs significant repair, so there's 21,500 in there. I took out the repointing of the brick for this building, because I think we could wait a year. There's facade work for this building at 38,600, because a lot of the facade is actually rusting away, where it's tins and other parts. And the town hall furnace, we're looking at replacement for 89,750 for this coming year. So, it'll be 165,050 worth of projects. If we can, if we're looking at doing the performance contract for energy, that furnace one may come out. We may actually have more money to do something, but at this point in time, I want to make sure we do replace it, so that's why it's in there. What you're going to see, you're going to stop seeing is, if we have the line item for the small repairs, the things that we come to you guys for, withdraw for, like, we got to fix a door, we got to fix a window, those are the smaller items that shouldn't be in our, the capital reserve. The big projects like this are the, the items that should be in there.
So, I guess, just to help me understand then, is it because of, you know?
Can I ask this question to Greg at this point?
Greg, so, everybody needs to come up to the mic, though, you can't sit in the audience?
So, I just.
So, there.
Yeah, just want to make sure we do that.
I, it all makes sense to me, it looks like a different, and I also will preface by saying that you're, I know you're working on your, your building assessment and a longer-range plan that represents a substantial amount of work, and that's in progress. And I think that will probably inform the capital improvement plans in the future. You're nodding. So.
Yes.
So, I just comment on your comfort level with taking a proposed 460,000 down to 100,000. That's a, that's a big change.
Well, if you look at some of the projects that are in that 400,000, you'll notice that they don't fall in technically into what your, your capital reserve funds are. So, your reserve funds are based on, are, are, the projects are based on anything over 50,000 for a building-type improvement or a capital-type improvement. The other part to it is any equipment over 10,000 would come out of those. Where, one of the reasons that we've proposed the line item that we've proposed, it's because of those projects that are the 10,000, the 8,000, the 5,000, the 3,000 type projects that are not technically capital projects. They are improvements to the systems that don't fall into that 50,000 category. So, some of that is out of that money already. So, that 406 is already dropped because we're going to be moving those projects out. And then on top of that, as you, as, as Steve had mentioned, we're also looking at performance contract. And with performance contracting, things like the boiler plants, some lighting upgrades, things like that, that were also caught in those numbers, may come completely out of that figure. And until we get through that process, we won't know exactly what that looks like. But it could be for this building, and, and I don't want to be held to any kind of numbers, but it could be looking at a heating system, energy control systems, and lighting in this building, all done under a performance contract with no impact to the budget or taxpayer line items. So, those numbers get pulled out of that. And, and I think it's, it's, it's responsible for us to kind of really do that at this point until we know where we are with that, and then build from that. It also, we also need to kind of finish creating the, the really facility needs report, and that's really from the zero to up dollars on a long-term, you know, carpet replacement, painting, boiler replacement, lighting replacement, and doing those analysis on all of the buildings and creating that master plan, if you want to call it, that says this is what we need to be doing over the next, in this year and this year. So, that's kind of, right now, we're in a, I don't know if I want to call it a transition period, or a period where we're kind of coming up with what those really look like in the long run. So, I don't, I don't think we, it would be smart of us to all of a sudden just grab all kinds of money, not knowing where the performance contract, not knowing where our real needs are, until we get done with that program.
Counsel Weinstein.
First, let me just comment, I love the idea of that, and I think, kind of like the roadway plan, you know, so we have this master plan that we follow, and so year-to-year we, we basically know what we're going to do each year, and if we get some extra money, then we can add some things on. And so, I think that having that for facilities is really going to be very important. So, I have a specific question about, again, just to help me understand the process. So, there's a request for the police department parking lot repairs for $31,000. Now, it's marked as urgent from the CIP committee, and I guess I'm, and that's not on the list of things to do, but it's also under that $50,000 threshold. So, I don't, so where does that, like, this project stand?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Part of this is, because the committee thought it was urgent, does not mean that the town administrator thought it was urgent. And I discussed that with the department head, and also what we're doing with scheduling other projects.
Okay.
So, if I know in a year that we're going to have, be doing another road project, I could say, I could ask the Public Works Director, hey, Bell and Flynn at the same time, can they get in there and do that project?
Exactly.
So, it's just that kind of, I have to prioritize that way.
Yep.
And, and again, I have to look at what's the impact on the tax rate in that coming year.
At some point, I think that that would be a really helpful workshop for the council to have, like, maybe when the CIP first comes out, to, to get maybe into, more into the nitty-gritty, because I don't think we did that when we talked, we just sort of did an overview. So, to have those specific, like, this is what I, you know, these are the projects, and maybe 10 years down.
Yeah, and that's why, and this is why I gave the list in the budget.
Right.
I knew in the last past year, you didn't, it wasn't there, but I wanted to show, look, we are funding these, it's not.
Absolutely. But just kind of why we're not funding the other ones, I guess, is what I'm curious about.
But to some point, I think, even if it goes a little, puts the agenda behind, we can do a certain amount of that now, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that's the way I want the process to work. Some of these are big items that I think we want to have as a conversation when we do the budget, because they're bigger than a lot of the items that are in the line items where we spend most of the day. In the case of the, of the parking lot, I can understand for scheduling, it's been that way in the police, but when, when, we toured that as the CIP, it was presented to the CIP committee of, there's this area that gets, retains water in the wintertime, and one of the officers fell, and it was, you know, so, so it was, it was presented at that time that this was a kind of a safety issue, so.
And, I guess, this is the, the difference as well, each department head advocates for their department, which is their job. My job is to advocate for all departments and prioritize for the town, as the town administrator, to the council. So, that's, that's the difference. I have to take into consideration of the parking lot, the police department, the roof at the Public Works Department, the equipment at the rec department, put it all together and say, okay, this is what we can do this year. And also, I have to look at the bottom line of the budget, because I have to get a budget passed at the end of the day.
And, and just to finish that statement, though, and our job is kind of oversight of that.
Yep, absolutely.
Right. So, Counsel Bowden.
First, want to say thank you for providing breakfast. Second is, just a question in regards to the, I guess, the official question of the inventory for facilities, as far as looking at the, everything that we have, everything that we, that needs to be replaced, whether it's the boilers, the AC, what has to be done, or what we have, I guess. Do we have an estimated time as far as when that may be?
I would like to have it done in that April-May timeframe. It's, it takes a lot of time. And just to give you a, an idea of how much time it takes, I've done the Beach Street, the new senior center that we picked up over there. That took, just to survey, the inside of the building and the outside of the building is a four-hour, and you, you know how small that building is. So, it took me four hours to survey it. It takes me another four hours to write up and do all the cost analysis. So, as you go forward, it's, it's a time-consuming process. The good part is, once we're done, it becomes a living document, and that's something we can update, move things around as we go forward, and make those decisions. But if I can get it all done in April-May, that's what I'm really shooting for, I think you'll find that it's going to be a really good document for you guys to use to be able to say, okay, this, we get it, and, and, and this is how we work our funding formulas and things like that. So.
That's, and that's something that's important, we've been, we talked about it, I think, last year, and it's important to know what to forecast. And second, I guess, second part of the question is, will there be a cost associated, cost associated to the town?
To do.
Do we need to bring someone in to assess and look at, making sure that, okay, this is.
On the facility analysis, no.
Another five years?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I've done quite a few of these already in the past. The, the, the costing per location, per job is all going to be estimated for you there, and so you'll know what each cost area, so for instance, if I say, in the next five years you're going to do carpet at the town hall, there'll be a cost associated with that based on a budget number.
Okay.
And that's how we'll create it. When we get down to, when you say, I'm going to authorize to have that carpet done, then we're going to go out and get our, our multiple bids and go forward with it from that angle. Again, we also have to think about where the performance contract. What's that?
Hopefully multiple bids.
Hopefully multiple bids, yes. I was just talking to Counsel Thompson about that just this morning, so. But that's kind of the processes that you would go through as we move forward with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not usually one to offer more money. However, looking at our current fund balance, and we're at 9.1 percent, we can be around the 8 percent and be safe. I mean, that's more than safe, that's very good. So, we could add an additional $250,000 to capital reserve funds without any impact by withdrawing from fund balance. And if there's, I know we were talking about the price of oil is low, if we want to do more roads, we could add 100,000 there. We could.
Pay the police.
Part of that, we could do the police parking lot this coming year. We could add, if you wanted to add more to the building improvement, we could add some to that to address there. And I would say bring back to the, the stormwater management one to 100,000, because they're going to have to be addressing, that's going to be a big cost soon. So, I mean, we're going to be able to knock those projects out and fund them when, this year when we have some extra money in the fund balance.
Yeah. Well, I would say, let's, with, at least with the department heads that are here, we'll continue to go through each of the capital reserve contributions here, just for a discussion about that, as we've been doing. And then, and then, I think, we'll address the question of whether we want to do that with the $250,000 at the end of that process. Counsel Thompson.
That was basically my question with 250, jumping ahead to the bottom line, as I tend to do. The increase was about 315, something like that? The increase was about 315, something like that? 315,000?
Yeah.
With the health care, as you mentioned before, and the sewer coming down, whatever, that leaves about 340, I'm really rounding.
Yep.
So the 250 could also be used.
But that's a one, this is a one-time.
I understand.
Right.
So it's just forward-thinking in the, in the balance of it, to, to mitigate the tax rate. I mean, I think our goal here is to keep the tax rate as level as possible, and we know that's going to be a little difficult with the school going forward. And I'm a little tired of the, you know, the town running so lean. But that would be something that I'd consider is use it for the buy-down, too.
Well, let's, I think, like I said, I think we get through the CIP discussion and then, or even at the end of the day, whatever we think is a better time to kind of have that broader question of, of, of that. So we're, we just did building improvement, and I guess roadway improvement, you sort of addressed in there already. We've been spending more than, than the amount. And I think in that case, you're, you're actually not lowering it.
No, we're leaving it.
So we don't really, I think, have to have a discussion on that one, per se.
Yeah, the only discussion would be is if you want to try to hit out some more roads, because prices are low.
I think that's always a lead candidate right now. The road, the need is certainly there, the price is right. Rick, you want to say anything more on that?
But how does that apply right now? I mean, we're talking about fiscal year '19, can we lock in asphalt for two years from now?
We could go until June 30th.
So what we do is, as soon, as soon as we pass the budget, we sign them up for July 1, sign a contract, because July 1 begins the year. So we're talking. Yeah. You're right, the, the ending is almost two years out, but the beginning is.
Prices now means nothing to me, even, you know, six months from now, we never know what's going to happen.
So if you wanted to put more money into roads to, for purposes of spending it as soon as possible to improve our roads, then wouldn't you put that money just into the line, the budget line, operating budget? Is there a reason to put it into capital reserve if you intend to take it out of capital reserve?
No, I mean, we can just reduce it in the following year. But the, the only difference is, it's, if you have a, if you don't spend it all in the capital reserve, it stays in the capital reserve. If you don't spend it all in the, operating budget goes back to fund balance.
Okay. Well, that's a good, that's a good, that's a good point. Thanks for that. Okay, I think that brings us to stormwater, and we, you, that's sort of, I mean, at some point, that's going to be some bonding there, right?
We're going to have to, yeah, this is, this project's going to be much larger than, I mean, this is a regional project, this is not a new market project, it's not a Seacoast project, it's everything west, east of 93. And there's lawsuits out there right now, there are discussions on who's going to be actually issuing the permits, whether or not it's going to be DES or EPA. So we're sort of in a holding pattern right now to figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
They always work things out quickly.
Yeah.
Right. But I guess, I guess, again, because the price is right, if I were choosing, if, if that means that we're going to have enough money to spend engineering with what you're putting in now, then I would, rather than put an extra 50,000 in there for something that may be held off for a while, I would, I would prefer to, to put the money in the short term to the, to the roads that just need it right now, and get, get the roads back so that they're sustained and not, not being damaged further.
Right.
I, I think, but that's, we can have that conversation. McCall and Dam, again, that's, that's a matter of paying for engineering until we're ready to come forward with the bond.
Right.
I think. So, and I think that's, we've got enough money to do the engineering that'll take that. I mean, we're going to, we're not that far away at this point before a bond proposal, I know.
No, I'd say probably a year out.
Yeah, so, so that's probably okay. Fire department. Where they have a reduction of 261 down to 50.
Correct. One of the items in there is the finishing of the second story. And before we do that, the fire chief and I need to come up with a plan on what, what the program's going to be. So I think before we, then I think in the coming year, we can come up with, come up with a plan and how it's going to look, and then next year, come in and say, we need this money now to withdraw to, to do the repairs upstairs. But we need to see what it's going to be before we do it. I mean, how, who's going to live there, what are the rules, what's, what's the supervision going to look like, what the employment cost is going to be? Because it's, those are the things we need to look at before, if not, we'll have a very nice second story, but we won't have the people to put in it. So that's it. The other is, again, there's 204,000, 240 in the fund. So that's why it's like, you know, if we put in, we're over-doubling the fund for the contribution, and I think we can withdraw what we have in there, in the rec of.
Just leave it there, maybe.
Yeah.
Right, well, I, I would think it would be real progress if where we have a plan to look at as a council, one year from now, to answer the question, yea or nay, we should be, whatever council is in place at that time, should say, this is what we're going to do, or this is what we're not going to do, because then, then it sort of doesn't sit out there as a decision to be made that hasn't been made. Counsel Weinstein.
So, I mean, like you said, there's whatever, 200,000 or so in the fund already. And I guess I'm curious, what, is that for vehicles? Is it for other equipment?
It's for everything.
It's for everything, that's the catch-all.
Vehicles, it's equipment.
Do you have anything coming up in the, anything scheduled for this, for the, this year?
Yeah, we're going to actually be bringing in something for radios, because we can get, basically buy one, get one free right now from the state, from a mess-up with Rockingham Dispatch, so we're going to take advantage of that, which will be a big savings. It's Motorola's fault, but it's, it's a huge savings to every town in Rockingham. So we'll get the mobile radios replaced for half the money. As soon as I get that proposal together, that's coming forward soon. That's the big one. And then we still have that lease purchase for the air packs that we purchased. We have another year to go, one more year to go on that. Engine one would be up for replacement in two years, I think it's 1920. We could look at a lease purchase potentially with that to help keep the fund at a level and not have a big increase, because a new engine's a half a mil now.
Right.
And that's common for fire engines, is you finance them, so.
Spread zelta cost.
Yep. Okay.
Even though that's, looks like a big reduction there, it sounds like you're both comfortable that this, this will meet your needs.
Yep.
Yep, good.
Yep.
Okay. Police vehicles, we already discussed, and.
But thanks for coming, Chief.
His face looks so dejected.
But he was up all night.
You had the revolving seat?
You're, you're my counsel.
The only question I had is about that, from my standpoint, is, because, because I hate to see, and this, I, I know inflation's been low, but when you have funds that have plenty of money to do what you need to do for the next several years, and you can't take money from a capital reserve fund to apply to something else while you're waiting for that, that even though eventually we may have to go back up and start funding at a more normal amount, it almost seems to me that we could just not add money to that fund. Recognize that someday, we're going to have to go back to adding more money, but that for several years, there's a lot of money in that fund that could be applied to something that's a more, more of an opportunity need at this point. Now, am I thinking about it wrong, or?
The, my thought is there that I would still prefer to have some funds to replenish what we're going to be using it for. We don't know what the cost of a cruiser is going to be in four or five years. We saw that two years ago, it was a different vehicle. I mean, luckily, it wasn't too much difference in the price, but you also don't know what the new equipment may be to outfit it. I mean, we would have thought, like, you know, 20 years ago, you had to have a computer, wireless computer in every, every cruiser. So I think, still replenishing.
Let me follow up a little bit, though, because you could say that about a lot of.
Absolutely.
Right. And, and if we didn't put any money in that capital reserve fund, how many years does that, you know, we currently have in the police vehicle capital reserve fund, how much is in there currently?
222,000.
And how many, how many cruisers do we average per year that you need to buy?
One, one to two, usually two, try to one, two.
We, we, we try to rotate one vehicle out with a new vehicle every year. Every three years, we try to do two vehicles as opposed to one. And there's a, a, a system in place to offset the cost of the capital improvements. It's the detail, the revolving detail account. And it's usually a lower-cost vehicle, because it's usually an unmarked vehicle. It doesn't have the cage, and it doesn't have, you know, it's not black and white, it doesn't have the decals on it, it doesn't have the amount of lights or equipment in it. So to answer your question, it's usually one a year, and every three years, it's two.
Right, so if you have 220,000, 29,000 in that fund, that tells me you could go four years spending off the fund balance. I'm not proposing we do zero for that, but I, I think if, if, I don't see the downside if there are, are higher priorities or more, more higher opportunities spending in the meantime, why you couldn't wait a while. That's, that's, we can, we can mix that into the discussion when we get to the end of it, but.
Let me, and, and I want to talk procedurally right now. I think we need to have the discussions while talking about each budget, because if not, you're going to be reviewing the budget twice. So if you want to make a reduction, let's make it while they're here, too, so they can discuss it and have comments. So if there's, if there's going to be a reduction in his budget, I think it's fair for the department head to be here.
Is he not here?
Well, no, he is, but you said, you said to come, you said to come back later and do it. Well, he's not going to be here later.
Well, I, okay, right, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, if we're into, if we're in contributions to capital reserves, let's do any reductions now, so we close it and move on to the next one. If not, we'll be here forever.
I, I was putting it in the context of what was, you would propose that we could have another 250,000 available. So I was putting it, we, we had said, well, let's sort of go through the, all of the capital reserve contributions. But I'm fine with whichever way you, if you want to bring that now, that's just, you want to poll the council to see whether they're comfortable?
You, you, you need to, not me. If you, if that's what you're proposing.
Well, I, I, I just say, I think that's an area of, if we're trying to find money to, to fund others, and I'm not sure we were. I, I really don't understand putting money away, putting more money into an account that has what always looks to me like four years' worth of expenditures. And then it's pretty predictable. It's not like you're saving up for some big thing in the future.
That's, that, I think your suggestion before that the council spends time on capital funds, perhaps in a different session and how it works, is a good one. You know, as Steve was explaining before, like, roadways, there's money that comes from the $5 fee here to fund that and all. But the key issue to me is, if you look at the town and think of capital issues as two things, separate, totally separate, which projects do we need to do that are a priority this year, which is where Steve's coming from? And then two, what do we need in long-term capital reserves to feel comfortable that we're covering the maintenance of the assets or the replacement of the assets? So if you said, for example, the town had 200 million dollars' worth of buildings, and then you look at the 2 million dollars that we have in total capital reserves, you're less than 1% of what the value of your assets are in the town that you have in the piggy bank. I don't really think that's necessarily enough. So I, I would say, don't, try not to mix apples and pears. Needing to establish what your capital reserves to make you feel comfortable to maintain your assets over a long run is one separate issue. How do we move the funds in and out this year to cover the projects is a totally separate one. And, and so when you end up saying, like, to Chief True, we have enough there to cover the next three vehicles, that may be true, but three years from now, if we have nothing, because we've implemented that, we're going to have to fund 200,000 or 300,000 instead of 50,000 a year. And I'm not saying which one's right or wrong, I'm saying they're two separate discussions you guys should have. And with, with Greg here, and, and what I've seen, and I don't want to squelch his hetero, he sort of knows what he's doing. That's why we brought him in, I think it's delightful, he's looking at a town view and not just a town versus school and all that, and some of the things we've talked about for years. Let him do his thing and come to you with it, but that may lead in May or June or April, when he said, to being able to methodically go through and understand we have fifty different assets.
But just to the point, he won't be commenting on the police vehicle one, because it's not under her, his prerogative. Counselor Cast.
Just to that point, I, I'm not clear on how you bring those two pieces back together to make sure that you are funding it at the point in time in the future that you need to continue to fund, fund the reserve. So I just want to make sure we think about that.
Yeah, and just to keep improving, I like the suggestion that we workshop, and I think, we could workshop this a little more about just some of these questions in a more.
Right, but I understand you have to have a budget passed by November 15.
Oh, I'm not talking about.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not greatly worried about whether we put 29,000 into that capital reserve this year or not.
Okay.
But I just think, it's an interesting question of how you start to allocate those when you have a fund, as we say, it has enough for three or four years, maybe you don't put year, zero, but I, I, I would like to keep our money working. And if we're overfunding things, then we're putting money into places where it's, it may not be working for a while. So it, interest rates are not high, where it's losing value, and we could, we can maybe have more adjustment year to year.
And to be quite honest, politically, I'll discuss this, once a line item goes to zero, especially with a contribution like this, it's very difficult to put any money in. Once they, it, it could be a whole new council and say, you never funded it, why, we haven't funded the last three years, why do you need to do it?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
You know, that we need to have that continuity over time.
And that's why if we put something in, it keeps the line alive, and you will have funds in there if something comes up.
Right. It could be 10, very easily, and serve the same point, and it's still, you know, knowing that in, in two or three years, you'd have to dump it, you might have to jump it back to 40 or something like that, but in the meantime, you might have applied it to something more urgent.
How will you know in four years? That's my question, so.
So I guess my question right now, is there a recommendation to reduce this line to 10?
Counsel Weinstein.
My thought about it is that, so, and my recommendation is to keep it as is. I think that reducing it, you know, you already cut it in half, putting in basically half of a car this year makes sense to me. So, and I think having that cushion, I mean, that's why we have the capital reserve funds, so that we can fund projects moving forward. So I think that you already cut it in half. I don't feel the need to cut it anymore, and so that's my recommendation.
Well. Counsel Finch, are you going to push something?
Yeah.
You look like you were.
I think 26 makes sense, too, just in terms of, I like 26, if you do the math at the end, let's say, simple math, you'd exhaust your, the current funds in there, and you'd have somewhere around 100, 400, 5,000 for years from now. So I think 26 makes sense, because it does give a, a nice buffer down the road. Granted, you're going to have to certainly raise it down the road, but I think 26 makes sense for the short term.
Well, I, I, I think I have the sentiment of the council, moving on to dispatch. So in that case, you reduced from 23 to 10, but I think that's, again, a case where, I think, when we, you were, there were some good deals that were made available.
Right, and the dispatch currently has 182,922, and.
And for, just for the record, when, when Steve cuts this, he gives me the courtesy to have a discussion with me, and I do appreciate that. It's not something where he's just hacking it. He has a conversation and says, are you going to be, are you going to live with this? And I look at the numbers and agree or disagree, so.
So you're comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with it.
So I think we're, we're just continuing down through the line, so we're going to move on to, I don't.
These are all the.
These are all small ones. I don't know if there's anything that we need to, since we're behind on things, is there anything anybody wants to call out and, and talk about at this time, from a CIP standpoint? Most of them are funded at, you added in the 2,000 back for the celebration, otherwise they're actually as proposed.
Yep.
So I would say, we could then go to the question, is it now the time to talk about the 250?
250.
And then we'll be done. I have no comments. I have a comment, Weinstein.
I think any money that we can put into roads is valuable movie, it's, it's an investment in our infrastructure, and I think that any extra funds that we have to do that will pay off down the road if we have the money to do it now. I think, and I know, I hear your point about reducing the tax burden, but if it's a one-time spike, I think that that can be problematic also. So I just see this as a bigger investment for the future. I, I've seen that road plan and it, it worries me, so. And we have a lot of work to do, so, and you know, again, I mean, I live on Ash Swamp Road and we, it took four years to do that one road. And so, and so knowing that, it just, I, I, any, like I said, any money we can put into roads, I think is, is more than appropriate.
Councillor Thompson.
I think we're pretty close on the, on the same page here. I do know that each, each year typically, Steve, we do use part, like fund balance to provide on the tax rate. So even here, while I recognize the importance of the roads and I know that I personally, over the last couple of years, have pushed to, to spend more in it, I'm not comfortable with the whole 250 going in, so I'd say 120, 125, 100, something like that.
I just want to correct, we actually have stopped doing that.
Was it the last year we stopped?
We stopped after the year they had the issue with using too much fund balance.
Yeah.
And we put a policy in, and the council policy is we can only use fund balance for capital items. So that can't go to reduce the tax rate. It's, it's got to be for one-time purchases. So that was to put that, stop that measure, measure in. So that's why it's...
However it works, I think I'd like, I've made my point.
Councillor Finch.
I, I think roads should certainly be a consideration for divvying those funds up, but I, it's probably too early to bring this up, but I do want to draw attention to the waterfront improvements. I know there's been no suggestion, but down the road, that could be an issue down on the bottom here in terms of erosion. There's something that's been initially looked into with the Conservation Commission, that there's some significant erosion down the waterfront, so I just want to at least draw attention to it. I know it's something that's been discussed just yet in the real form, but that could be a consideration for potentially down the road, just to bring awareness, so significant cost.
Okay, Councillor Bowden.
I'm in agreement with adding the funds to the roads. I do agree with Councillor Thompson that not all of it should go there.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
That's, I just seen a few different things from as far as these, or buildings, roofs, such as the rooftop right here.
Let's have a, I mean, I think that's, that's a pretty easy decision point, then we can move on. How many, I, I think, I'm trying to figure out how to frame it. I, I'm, I'm comfortable that the one that would be easiest to put towards fastest and that clearly there's a need, is that the proposal is put it all in, into roads right now, and then work on things like, you know, erosion control, those types of things in the, as, as plans in the, you know, to come before the CIP for a plan next year, a more robust plan. So, so what I would say to that is, let's, let's poll first, because I don't know any other way to do it, is how many would be in favor of taking $250,000 to add to the, the road project?
I'm sorry.
I guess, do we want to use the full 250, because I've heard people seem to want to help out the road area, but do we want to use the full 250 and apply it, or is it...
My argument for that, and I, and would, would be if, if not, just not to monopolize thing here, but my argument for doing it is if we have other things that we're saving for into the future, I still would rather spend it first on roads because price of oil is low. And I'm, it's an opportunity and, and, you know, that's the thing, I get the most comments from constituents, you know, in my neighborhood, and I don't complain about it here, but people are sweeping the roadway off to the side of the road because it's just all crunched up. So I just feel like, you know, if we can do that, I think that over the long term, it's, it saves the taxpayers the most money to spend it when it's cheap. Councillor Burns.
I'm in agreement with you. I think the most urgent need is the roads at this time, so of course down the line, we can look at different things like erosion and different things like that to, to get a plan together for something like that. But the urgency, I think, is the roads.
Councillor Weinstein.
I would just wanted to comment, because the town administrator said you had a few different items that you mentioned when we first started this conversation, so I didn't know, I didn't know what your thoughts were about it.
I was just going to say, I still think we need to put a chunk of it into buildings. We need to replace the roof at the Public Works Department. That's going to be... So that's, that's why I'm saying split...
So what would be your recommendation, and then we'll vote on that.
I'd say a hundred, additional 100 to roads and 100 to buildings. And then if you want to do 125 to each, that's fine. But, I mean, we've got some big projects on the building side that we need to address.
So do you, does anybody want to make, do we need a motion on this to, to, or do we just need to give, tell you what?
If that's the, is that the wish of the council?
Do you want to poll everybody?
Yeah.
What would you like to do?
That's, that's fine.
Is it 125 each or 100 each?
120, unless there'd be 50 left over.
Yeah, so 125 each?
125, yeah.
Okay.
I would lean towards 100 for the roads and 150 for the building improvements for the roofing and all that stuff.
Councillor Thompson.
Even split.
Split. Want us to come back to you?
No, no, I'm, I'm thinking with the roads, if you can do a long-term contract and lock in the price, that mitigates the oil prices going up. So I'm thinking...
No, they don't usually do that.
They'll do a fiscal year, that's it.
That's it? Okay, well, never mind on that. So I think I am half and half on that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be different. I'll say 150 to roads, 100 to...
Split down the middle.
I'll say split down the middle, so we have enough.
Yep, so the change is now that the town council is recommending the building improvement fund be at $225,000, and the stormwater man, I mean, I'm sorry, the road improvement will be at $260,000. And I've adjusted the revenues already to increase it by additional $250,000.
Sold to American. We'll go back to the agenda now.
Yeah, next is recreation, because they've got an event this afternoon. Just rec right now, then, police.
So roads, 260, we're on what page?
Recreation starts, there's going to be two. Recreation is on page... There's two, there's one, yep, 54 and 55.
We're still on CIP?
No, we're done.
Howard Jones is here?
Yep.
Thank you guys for having the discussion. This is really healthy, I think it's going to be a, a topic for the next few years, but this is the first time, and it really was a healthy discussion. So regardless of who we came out, thank you for making the management. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. 54. Okay.
Oh.
Do you have opening comments about this, or no, just start from...
It's a reduction of about 1%?
Let's see. Your line is...
No, it was the previous one.
Councillor Weinstein.
I wanted to start with a comment, and that's, when my, you know, obviously when my kids were little, we participated in the haunted, the Halloween haunt and rec sports and all those activities. Now it's great to have, like, the bar fitness and these activities that I can participate in, so, great job.
Oh, thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Wait till you see what you have in store.
What's that?
We have more in store for adults.
I know, and I read that, and I just think it's great to have this programming for adults. I mean, I also see the, the senior center side, and that's great, but like, I'm kind of in the middle, you know?
It's one of the hardest audience because the rooms are so busy.
Yeah, and it's really great to have, have options for adults.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, I have another question.
Go ahead.
So what's the scoop with the, with the splash pad?
The scoop with the splash pad? The last that has occurred is the, the school board approved to write a letter to LWCF where I am trying to apply for grant. They have not awarded any grant opportunities yet. They said that they were going to send the letters in October. They did receive the letter, and that's where I am, so until I know whether or not we actually have the opportunity to apply for a $150,000 match grant, it's kind of tabled. And then if we do, then that'll proceed, but if we don't, then we got to start from the drawing board as far as where additional funding would come from. So we're going to try for that one first.
Is the hope still to have it in place for next summer, or no?
No, if we were to apply for the grant and received it, 28 other towns applied for the grant for monies, and that whether or not we get approved, it wouldn't even be awarded until the following fall.
Okay.
So then it would be the 2019, it would be my goal. And that would be my, my goal either way. We just need to find a different way of funding, whether it's, you know, a GoFundMe account or, or something like that to make the match. But this is the first try, because if we can get $150,000 from LWCF, that's the way I would go.
Yep, great, thank you.
I, I see very little drama in this.
No changes? Okay, no changes on the general recreation. The next page is the rec revolving. It's $305,722, which is 9.55% increase. This is all offset by revenue. Anything that comes in from programming goes back into this. So it's a self-sufficient fund, does not impact the tax rate, because you can't use the, the funds to go back.
I think we're okay with it. I don't see anybody need additional time, but I'm not seeing...
That's it for recreation? Do you want to take a two-minute recess because the next two individuals just had their tones go off, so I want to find out what's going on?
Okay.
Are you good?
I'm good.
You're good?
Any other little comments you want to make? You could take a minute if you want to say...
Hey, come down to the Halloween haunt. We have 1,000, I'm anticipating, 87 shares, 450 people interested, and at least 150 said they're going, and you multiply 150 times the family, because it's usually one like, so.
The Halloween haunt has grown, I mean, just again, like, I don't know what, how old my kids were when we first started going, but I've seen it get bigger, and like now they're, they're, you know, they're a little middle school. They're not ready for that anymore. They're not into it anymore.
We added a petting zoo this year.
It's huge.
We're doing some races. We have touch a truck. I have 70 volunteers showing up 10 minutes ago, so. I got to go.
Get down there.
Thank you.
It's a quick recess. There's a quick recess.
Okay.
(inaudible)
Okay, and we're resuming our meeting. On the budget, it looks like there's no difference between department heads proposed and town administrator proposed on the police budget, and it represents actually a very small, what, .14% relative to increase over prior budgeted amount. So with that, do you want to have any general comments you want to make about it, Chief?
No, I, I will answer any questions. It's a, it's a very lean budget. It's an $1,800 increase. I'm happy to answer any questions. I did increase a couple of, one or, one or two line items, and I can answer as to why if anyone's interested.
Well, just as a general one, too, had, we're in the process of negotiation on the, on contract.
Correct. And that's not factored in here.
That's not factored in here, so.
We're still in that process, and what happens is any numbers that are agreed to would be on the warrant as a separate item.
Okay. Are there any, I see, I assume if somebody else had a comment or a question, I would have a light, and I don't have any lights.
Okay.
It looks like a lean budget, it looks, I have nothing to say.
So police will go forward as is?
Mm-hmm.
The next is fire and rescue.
Thank you.
Fire and rescue is on page 48.
All the action was on the Capitol reserves.
Yeah. Fire is, my proposal is an increase of 3.91%, the department head's was 11.6%.
The increases were in part-time salaries. We're, we're trying to be a little more creative with how we pay the call department, to get them to do more hours, cover, cover more calls. There's been increase in calls every year. Any increase in here in other line items is just call volume.
And I, the reason why I reduced it to 160 is I, we don't know exactly what number's gonna be yet for the part-time additional, so I thought it was a more comfortable number than 179.
So does that, oh, sorry, does that represent more hours, another staff, like, what is, what exactly are you thinking?
It's more hours paid for the call department.
Okay.
So they get more, they get, we basically pay them, paying them now a minimum wage to cover. So even if there's a, the old way, you used to only get paid if you went on a call. Now, if you're committed to cover the ambulance, and this is strictly for the ambulance, you get minimum wage, so if there's no calls in that timeframe, you get paid minimum wage.
Right.
The problem we're having is weekends that individuals would not be around. So basically, this is telling somebody on the weekend, you will be around to answer ambulance calls. You will be paid the minimum, but you will be around, and it's worked.
It's worked, it's helped out to help cover the calls. We're just busier and busier, and ambulance is running all the time, and it's, people are getting burned out. We're picking up some new people, but it takes a year to get, get them trained and off, you know, probation, licensed.
And just a reminder that ambulance calls are also a revenue call.
Just pushed my button.
Yep.
Can you just explain that the $10,000 out is covered by?
Exactly, it's covered by, yeah.
And, and the revenues were higher than anticipated this year, too, so.
On, on training and staff development, I noticed that you wanted to spend your budget this last year, and you're, you've been grouped for, it's going, the budget's going up when the, last year, in fiscal year 17, budget was 18, you spent 15, five, and now it's 20.
That's the only place I can control, kind of say, wait until July to go to class, because, because of the cost, we were real close with the budget, I was worried about the salaries.
Okay.
So that's why. I, I didn't let anyone go to training until the new budget cycle.
So that makes total sense.
That's the only place I can really, that and equipment purchases, you'll see, I, I can freeze those two and hope, hope to stay in line.
But those aren't, think you want to do long-term?
You know what I mean?
You mentioned burnout and the number of calls, and I'm just curious if the opiate crisis is, is part of that problem, you know, if, or where we're, I know, I know that we've reduced things a ton within Newmarket, but I'm just curious how that leads, how that relates to your calls and...
It's, it's not so much that. That is getting busier again. It kind of quieted down a little bit, but we have seen an increase over the last four months. It's took off again for some reason. We were fortunate there for a little while, but it's, it's more the, the biggest thing, I guess, would be the, it's, it's a term we use with some of the calls, is the frequent flyer people that don't necessarily have to go by ambulance to the hospital, but want the ambulance to take them, so.
Are those typically medical or mental health, or both?
It's, it's, it's a combination, it's a combination, but I, I say usually it's because someone's lonely more than typically, so they call for the ambulance, and then they really feel they need to go get checked out, but they could go see their primary tomorrow morning, you know what I mean?
Right.
But it, but it happens, and those are the, you know, people know, because, you know, when you get up at 2:00 AM, you're not going back to bed, and if you've got to be to work at 7:00 the next morning, it's, it's tough.
Right.
And, and when you know that, that call isn't really an emergency per se, it's hard to get people to go take that one, you know what I mean?
Right.
It's, it's a, it's a balance there, and we're trying to...
Oh, it's Mrs. Solins, how we handle whatever.
You can't say, hey, we're not gonna take, you know what I mean?
She might be cooking, so, I mean, you don't know, but you gotta go.
You gotta go.
Yeah.
Counsel Thompson?
Um, well, we had Chief Poo here, too, I, I forgot, this affects you as well with dispatch in Newfields. Where are we at with that, and is there a potential dollar amount for the revenue that could come through if that agreement comes back into place? Like, Newfields rented our dispatch for a little bit for X number of dollars.
Yep.
Is there anything you can say about that?
That, Steve's handling that?
We're coming up with those figures now for what's the best cost, what the best price to charge is.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Because some of that would figure...
Sufficient it.
Because that would impact this. But that would impact, I mean, it would offset, it would be a revenue stream that would offset.
Yep, it would be additional revenue.
This and, and the police line item, okay, thank you.
Okay. No more lights, can we move to DPW?
Are we, so the fire department is okay as is?
I heard not.
I'm all right, yeah.
DPW is on page, begins on 41, Public Works Administration.
So, looking at a 6% increase almost, what in the budget, right?
The majority, yep, majority is on salaries, the others in general supplies.
We, we had a, somewhat of a bad winter last winter, so we, we were freezing where we could to cover the overages. So you'll see line items that, on the actuals, that are lower, but that's places where I could hold it, I had to hold it because we went over on overtime and salt and trucks and so forth, and some of the equipment, but...
It all hit kind of late in the year.
You know, we got it, yeah, yeah, but we were able to do our best there, but when you're looking at that stuff, that's kind of where, why you'll see that. The increases are really just trying to, trying to budget like if we had a normal winter, I guess, so we're not trying to scramble to find funds when we do have those heavier winters.
So how does that change full-time salaries by 10 grand?
I can speak to that. There was a support person that was being shared by water and sewer, and the plan is to have Rick, to have that person 100% in Public Works, per the MRI study. So that's how that was built.
And that was planned before even that, because of the new wastewater treatment?
I didn't know, right.
Yep.
So are we, Rick, when you were talking about, just then, you were, you were talking more at page 42, the roadway and sidewalk, or?
Nope, overtime.
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 He requested 65, I left it at 50. Again, as he said, though, it's one of those ones, if we have a bad winter, we overexpend it, if we don't.
When we find it.
Yeah. That's why I said level.
And like I said, we send them home, and we can send them home.
Right.
But when you get a storm on a Friday night, it's just, it kills you because it's all weekend, and you, you try to send them home, but it's, it's about, you know, it's, sometimes they go out to sea, so you, if you send them home, are we paying them, are we making them sick and vacation, like, you know what I mean? Like, it's, you know, it's...
So next is roadway and, um, roadway and sidewalk?
I think, I think no change.
Okay.
Interpret no lights as no change, so.
Yeah. That's a, I'm recommending a 2.48% increase. You requested $80,000 in sidewalk construction, I reduced that to 45,000, and it was requested for asphalt at 175, I reduced that to 155, knowing now that we also had added 125,000 to roadway. That makes up for that easily.
So we're back to about 280 on that.
Exactly, plus the other funds from the $5 fee.
Counsel Lacy?
Um, what sidewalks are we talking about?
I was looking at finishing Bennett Way, getting up to the top of the hill, continuing.
Will that cover the 45?
No, no, but we can, we can do what we can do.
Plus this 45 in this current fiscal year.
Yeah, and we're gonna make some repairs to some, we have some trip hazards, some of the concrete sidewalk panels have cracked and heaved, so we're gonna be making repairs to those because they've been identified as trip hazards and so forth. And if, there's a couple other sidewalks we're gonna fix up on Spring South and Nichols, where it's, the trip hazards, they kind of broke up pretty bad, so we need to get some repairs out there.
Counsel Loeb?
Looking at the, the winter salt, I mean, 121,000, 242 was spent last winter, correct?
Yep.
Is 85,000 gonna be enough?
I'm, I was trying to budget as if we had a normal, I say a normal winter, that's kind of where it went. It went up, I think it went up $2.20 this year per ton. It's, it's usually not much of an increase, it's usually 50.75 cents. This year it did go up, I think, $2, but...
Okay.
Again, this is one of those lines, crystal ball. Yeah, we don't have, we don't know, it's, one year it could be 50, one year it could be 122.
Yeah, because the year before, wasn't it very minimal?
The one before, yeah, two, two back.
Yeah, two back.
Two back.
Yeah.
The prediction this year, it's supposed to be bad, but who knows? They can't, they can't predict that, I think that's a bunch of smoke, but...
Counsel Thompson?
It's no secret, I'm not a fan of sidewalks on Bennett Way, but that being said, we do need to repair some of the other ones. But I'm wondering, I don't necessarily have a problem with the bottom, bottom line total, but I'm wondering, how easy for you, how is, easy is it for you? Let's say you only need 20,000 for sidewalks, can you take, can you take the other 25,000 and put it towards salt? Can you move things around during the year in, in this budget as you need to?
Administrator is nodding, yes.
Steve.
I can.
Steve does, Steve.
He comes to me and says, look.
We talked, me and Steve.
I don't want to, he goes, I'm not gonna spend X amount in sidewalks, I'm gonna spend it in salt, and I approve that.
Because that's where I'm not, and you guys know, I'm not a big fan of micromanaging how you do anything in here, the overall bottom line, I'm fine enough with, I mean, for a couple of...
Yeah, the only time I...
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
But I think, obviously, covering your costs with salt as you've done in 17, something else is gonna need to get cut, and I'm gonna...
Yeah, that's what we do.
Trust would verify that you all will do what you need to do.
The only time we have to come to the council is if we transfer from police to fire.
Right.
I have to get permission there, but anything within an department, we can do.
And that's what I, that's why I always wait on some things, it's just...
Yeah, I mean, to me, salt would be the priority, not the sidewalk, you know what I mean? When we have to make those decisions, that's what we gotta do, we can't have people killing themselves, so I, I get that.
Like, we had such a bad winter, we left the shed completely empty.
I know.
So I'm filling it right now, that's gonna take a big whack because it's gonna take a lot to fill it.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with it.
Counsel Loeb?
As far as the sidewalks on Bennett, are, are all of the buildings, the department buildings owned by Cheney?
No.
No.
Cherry Hill's a separate entity from Walter G., which Cheney companies, I should say.
You're harking me back to a big debate that happened about three years ago.
Yeah, do they, is there any way to get them to?
We, we, we had a full discussion on that, basically. We said, woulda, shoulda, when they...
In the 80s, right.
When they approved, that should have been done, but you can't go back and now, and...
Yep.
Well, my mother's up in there, so.
No, I, I.
I guess I'll go over the sidewalk.
Watching people try to come down there in the wintertime, I, I went up there and sat. At the time we had the debate, I went up and sat there and tried to watch people walk down with, sort of on the edge of a snowbank, trying to walk down from there. And some people were walking up and down there and it was, it was.
Could you leave some of the concrete panels up a little bit so at least it stops them from sliding all the way?
So we're also with roadway and sidewalks? I'll say, the next is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The next is street lighting, it's a minimal increase, just rates. We're, we're not sure exactly what we'll be seeing, seeing for savings with the LED, so we want to keep it as flat as possible. And again, some of that savings from the LED lights are going back to pay for them, so you won't see a drop at that time.
And someday we will.
Yeah. Bridges? Bridges Department requested ten, I said four.
Guardrail repair, it's some new installation. If you know, on Lang's Lane, if you go past Amy's house down the hill.
I was just gonna say, past Amy's.
There's a culvert with a big drop off and someone put a car out there last winter and it really needs to be protected with guardrail. It doesn't meet any standard, it just never had guardrail there, but it really needs it.
Can we make it narrower right there so people?
We could do anything you want, no.
It's fourth option going to cover what that cost.
Well.
Did we talk about this last year?
Yeah, well, there's, there's a little, there's a spot on Ham Street too that needs some stuff, but we'll do what we can do.
Just go too damn fast there.
Well, you know, it's a hill on each side.
I know.
And they just, with a curve in there, so you go straight, you're going in the culvert. It's like, it's probably like fifteen feet down, it's a pretty big hole. Next time you're cruising around, you take a look at it.
I'm gonna, if, there's no issue with guardrails. I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the list of what I have and I was gonna say, there's one that vehicles, you should, we should skip two and then come back to vehicles. We'll start with vehicles.
Okay.
Because the next two are buildings around the cemetery, so it'd be Greg and. Vehicles is on.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't quite finished on that.
Oh, sorry.
Topic of the guardrails, I just was trying to, because we, it wasn't a, we're not in a year where we're horribly constrained. And I was, I just wondered, did it not make sense, do you, did you not quite think that those, is there enough money to do the two guardrails?
There wouldn't be enough to do both, we might be able to do one.
But if, if he has money in another budget line item, I could take it from there and do it.
If we didn't have a bad winter, so.
Right.
We could.
So.
Use some.
I'm comfortable, that's right.
If we have a bad winter, we'll just.
Yeah.
All right, move on.
Uh, motor vehicles, it's down two point five eight percent.
That's forty-seven?
I think so, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. It's just, we're maintaining better, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna jump up the solid waste, Steve?
Oh, yeah.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Page fifty-six.
I apologize. And this is a, a revolving fund. It does not cover its own costs, but we do receive money from the bags to offset some of it. And we're seeing a fifteen percent increase, this is due to our new contract that we signed with Casella.
And how much of that is offset?
For revenues?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Sorry?
Revenues for solid waste. Which do we receive annually?
While she's looking at that up, have we surveyed surrounding towns and see what, what they're charging per bag and?
Less than what we do.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, we've been at our price, our price has been at our price for a while, but when it went to there, it went.
Well, I think it's, you know, you, you just don't wanna create incentives for people at this dump, so I.
What's a bag in Dover, Steve, do you know? One seventy-five?
Yeah.
I need a moment to pull that out because I have total special revenue, I have total.
Okay.
Break it out.
Is there any other question on this page?
It's right around two hundred, I think, Steve, isn't it?
Seriously.
Sound familiar? It's right around two or two or two, maybe? Yeah, I don't wanna miss, I'm just saying, I know it's.
I thought it was helpful.
Yeah.
In your newsletter, by the way, that you added, um, what you can't recycle. And I think, and it, it was actually brought up to, to us or to me and I think to Counselor Bowden from a constituent. That it would be helpful to have what, um, what you can in another newsletter possi- you know?
Sure.
It was just, and she, you know, thought it was a great idea to, that you added that, so.
Yeah, what they're doing is just so the public knows, they're enforcing it. And if something's in the recycling bin that's not supposed to be there, they're not taking it. Because they're getting hit at their end, um, the, the, the companies that take the commodities are not taking any contaminated materials. So they have to start it at the beginning of the flow.
And then do we get fined or something? Like what happens?
You just don't.
Or they'll just say?
They just won't take it. No fines.
I don't have that detail with me that.
Okay.
Okay. Could you find it for the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Or we think it's over two.
It's about two hundred, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's close enough for this discussion.
Are we leaving the spring cleanup line item in there?
It's blank, we have to, we'll remove it, but yeah.
But in our faces, no.
Yeah. Again, it's not, we're not doing spring cleanup any longer.
Right.
So you might as well take it out.
Yeah, we'll take it out.
Remove.
So that is.
That's it for that.
The DPW, yeah. The next would be buildings and grounds.
Page.
Five? Okay, that has a twenty-two point one seven percent increase. And the majority of it is the operational repairs fund. The department head's requesting a hundred thousand dollars, I suggested seventy-five thousand dollars. Next I'll let the director go through all the changes.
Sure, do you want me to hit, start right with that one or?
Just start with, you know, the highlights for everything.
So, um, you'll notice there's some oil change costs and that just reflects the increased costs that we have for purchasing oil. It isn't a big jump, but it is, there is an increase on projections and that hits a lot of them. We have a added line item, which is your, your Beach Streets Center, which wasn't there last year. And that's primarily because, well, we didn't have the building last year. So we have heat, oil, electricity and maintenance for that facility added in. There is a increase to the town hall maintenance and, and that's just to reflect about some of the things that we, we still need to take care of. For instance, fire detection and roof inspections and things like that. There is a, um, community center, uh, heat went up quite a bit and that is to reflect the actual numbers of where we're sitting. Compared to what may have been budgeted. We added another line for the bandstand to do maintenance to the bandstand. Which obviously shows a very large increase just with the fact it wasn't there prior. We also have a line item for the hand tub or the hose halls, if you recall, on, to do some more ongoing maintenance with that building. Just to try to keep up with it once we get things into place.
Which building is that, sorry?
The Tiger House company?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm gonna skip operational repair right now and, and jump into the stormwater inspections as we get further into our MS four permitting and the requirements that may come along with that. We're gonna have to do more and more inspection requirements and that, that's funded to help us get that taken care of. And then under the operational repairs and replacement, that's the line item we've been discussing. Where those repairs to our facilities don't fall into that fifty thousand dollar capital item or the ten thousand dollar equipment item. It's that kind of, call it the in-between pricing where you may have a, an eight thousand dollar repair that. Well, I'll give you a great example, when we replaced the air conditioning or the condensing unit that went bad for here. That would fall into that type of a category because it was a three thousand dollar item. So that we have those to start picking away at those smaller non-capital type repairs. Be it, I think Steve mentioned a doorway that needs to be replaced or, or, um, for instance, even in the parking lot at the police station, which we've discussed. Would fall into those type of categories. Because they're under that fifty thousand dollar threshold. Counsel Weinstein?
So as I said before, I love this idea and I think that it's important that we have a plan in place in order to implement, um, this amount of money. So I, I think that it's great to have this line item, I would love to see a list of projects that, and I, and I know you're working on the, the bigger master list, but it would. I just, I need to see something.
And I think, well, I think part of this too is, we come to the council for re- for repairs that we don't know are gonna happen.
Right.
That's a, and that's, we withdraw a lot from the capital reserve funds that way and that.
This is to re.
This is to replace that, coming to the council. The larger projects that we're doing, the, the planning for, that would be the withdrawal from the capital reserve fund. This is the small, we have a broken window, it's gonna cost me two thousand dollars because it's a special window, I need to go to that fund. Versus coming in, coming in three weeks later to the council and saying, okay, now can I replace the window? That's, it, it reflects better of, it's the general maintenance, it's not the project costs.
Counsel Thompson?
I'm gonna second what Counsel Weinstein said, um, I'm not comfortable. I, I get why we would establish that so that we can do things, whatever, I'm still not comfortable with the amount. I'd propose thirty or forty thousand, something in there to say we did put it in there, but if we've got seventy-five thousand dollars of repairs that we need to do that are. I, I, I'm just not comfortable with that and again, without, without any, a little bit better plan, I guess, and some of this, how it will fold in as, as Greg does his assessments and things like that. But I'm not, I'm not comfortable with seventy-five, so I'd propose either thirty or forty or something like that.
Counsel Thompson?
I just echo those sentiments too, that seventy-five is a little bit high because I figured if you're going over fifty, there's probably a bigger issue. So I'd probably go closer to forty or fifty, so I go down.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll jump in here, I, I think I would say, I mean, I think, how many buildings, what's the value of all the buildings that we're talking about? That this line item is supposed to carry and cover? Your total asset value, I don't have totals, totals for yet. But I can give you an idea of what, I, there was a memo that, that went to Steve, uh, beginning of October, which outlines kind of what some of those items would be. Such as, uh, fire detection in the new Beach Street Senior Center of forty-two hundred dollars. Exterior painting of the Tiger House could fall into those areas because it's less than the fifty thousand. An exterior door replacement at the Tiger House that needs it, which is about thirty-eight hundred dollars. Police station parking lot repairs, which comes under that fifty thousand dollars. Interior painting to the public library, which would be a phased piece to it, about fifteen thousand dollars. So as you look at those items, those are the type of items that would go into that. So to give you an idea, what I, in the memo that I had sent was sixty-five thousand dollars worth of those, just those items. And, and they're all small items.
Back up a little bit here, we're painting the inside of the library?
No, we do not paint the inside of the library. We take care of the exterior of the library. Bye.
I'm gonna stick with my forty thousand.
If I was gonna, I was gonna offer forty thousand dollars.
Well, I, I just, my, my question though is, I, I, we can go back to it.
If, if we have these projects that we're planning for, I don't have an issue coming to the council and asking withdrawals for these. I'm looking for the, oh my god, the boiler died, I need ten grand. I can go to that and do it. Oh my god, the roof's leaking, I need to patch it, I don't have time to go to the council. We need the funds.
Right, but we've handled things like that before.
Yeah.
Can we, can we, does anybody have a sense of in the last twelve months, just to use twelve months? How many things that we did would have fallen under that? Because I, I feel like if we've got, I don't know, fifty million dollars in buildings or whatever the amount of asset buildings we're talking about. As a percentage, for maintenance type things that you would expect to do in a year. Any of these numbers we talk about are pretty small and the idea was to move away from using capital reserve funds to do that. And I, I, I think it's the, if you pick a number that's too small, I'm concerned that it won't be, do what we want it to do.
I think my suggestion is let's go with the number that you're saying, that they're saying.
Well, I'm not saying.
Well, no, 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 that's, no, they're saying, it's in there and, and we'll, we'll figure it out this year. I think that's the way we look at it, is say, okay, we've run out at this point, but we still have these other projects that we have to do. Let's figure that.
So you're saying going with seventy-five or going with forty?
I'll go with forty. Cause remember, we just gave a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Counsel Weinstein, I'm sorry.
Again, I don't have an issue with seventy-five, I was looking for that list. I, I, I think that's, that's all, I just wanted to know what projects we have in mind or, you know, uh, ten thousand dollars in carpet replacement. Or, you know, whatever that is, just to have a sense of.
And that's all what I'm.
And that's all I was, so I think that memo would have been helpful. Even, you know, that's all.
Been here four months and trying to get. Could you start working weekends, please?
So, on this one, I think.
It's Saturday, it is.
How about if we have a poll and just to make it simple, use two numbers, forty or seventy-five and poll, poll the council?
Sure.
That, that seem reasonable to do?
Yes.
Call the poll. Counsel Thompson?
Thank you.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Uh, forty.
Seventy-five.
Alrighty, where are we now? Is that, is there anything else on?
Cemeteries.
The page?
Next page, it's down three point four nine percent. Nothing. Gotta bury him.
How did it?
It is almost Halloween, so.
Salaries. Okay.
Next.
Um, water and sewer.
Thank you.
All right, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Moving along, huh?
Get through water and sewer, we can actually hit all the tiny departments.
Four lines.
Four lines.
Wow.
That was a good.
Might be a record. Let's, I'm sorry, what page is it?
Water and sewer starts on. Fifty-seven.
All the way in the back.
Sorry, yeah. Water, reduction of. I, it's a, here's the, the one, it says reduction on hours of five percent. It's four point one six percent because of a change in the healthcare status of an employee that reflects the correct number. An employee went from a two-person to a family.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
But still a reduction. And there's also, what's the contribution to capital reserves on his, trying to find your line, Sean?
Three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Three hundred and sixty-four thousand?
It's the same as.
Yeah, there it is, transferred to capital reserves. Why his isn't in the other one is because this is all enterprise funds and the, none of them comes from taxation.
This all just comes from water and, from water users, drinking water.
Just, oh, Counsel Cast.
No, I just had a comment before, but we pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I, I have one question, so I know we are putting money away to a developed Tucker, right?
Yes.
What, it probably is in something, but what, what, when will that, when do you expect to bring that online?
Right now, we are actually evaluating the costs of the blending facility or the MAC well coming up to treatment only. And what the cost to do the Tucker well is. Once we have that, uh, we are working on it with Underwood Engineers, we'll be putting a full plan together to go with the water main replacement program that was put, that we received in the asset management piece.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where we are, we can't really do anything until. And it was, it was nice to have seen your reports, knowing you, you know, nitrogen is way down in terms of our plan. It's a, it's a big reduction.
It's a huge reduction. Last month, I believe, we let out an average of five milligrams per liter, as compared to the previous year, of somewhere in the forty milligram per liter range.
Wow.
Almost ninety percent.
Yeah, so it was in the forty-
Forty-five?
Yeah, right around forty-five, and we reduced down to five. This month, we averaged three point nine seven. So the plant is, actually looks just like drinking water going up. So it's, it's, the process is working very well. We are working through a bunch of different scenarios, because we're trying to test equipment, stuff, taking stuff offline, putting it online, trying to run all the different scenarios to make sure everything works before the warranty period ends up. So.
Yeah, and I'm planning to attend the workshop Halloween morning on septic tanks, and they're having one for municipal people. But I, it, you know, the, the, it, it's way too early to see eelgrass beds responding to this, so you, you have to understand that. But that's, that's what we're after here with, with these kind of changes in the non-point and the stormwater, is to, you know, follow the news. There was another one, I think it was in California, places losing their eelgrass, and the, the environmental impacts of losing your eelgrass are huge in terms of siltation. And to see these steps being made, and our contribution to those steps, I mean, it would be such a lovely thing to see the water clear in Great Bay, and the eelgrass beds healthy. Even as it is, the, the eagles are back, there's so many good things happening, but this would really ramp it up, and it's an exciting vision.
The plan is to, once everything, everybody's out of there, is, is to have a Saturday open house for the public to come down and see it, which I've been working on with Steve.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I was wondering if you're gonna do that.
Yes. Well, you gotta get everybody out of there first.
Kids would love that.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay.
Thank you.
I still have no lights.
Okay, so we're all set with water and sewer?
That was, sorry to tough on you, Sean.
You will start?
Yeah.
We'll now start at the beginning, with the town council. It's an, uh-
Zero.
Page twenty-six. We're just gonna go page by page. It's an increase of eight percent. That's just to reflect the actual cost of the recording secretary. I'm just gonna go through if there's no, if stop, I think it's probably easier if someone says stop.
I'll yell if I light comes on.
Okay. Town administration, it's an increase of point four-six percent, which represents change in equipment maintenance, as well as change in full-time salaries. Finance is an increase of twelve point two-five percent. It's an increase for audit fees.
What page is finance?
Jim, the next page. Everything's just gonna be the next page from-
Everything's next page, okay.
Yeah. As well as it has the, the lease for the new financial system in there, fifty-four thousand dollars.
So what is, what is the financial system? What company did we go with?
We're gonna, you'll have it in your agenda this week for the first reading. It will be Tyler Technologies, which is Munis. So we're gonna be proposing that in a week or so.
And, and just because you're here, and we're not, we're running along as good, but Munis was sort of the one that was described as being, sort of the most versatile, powerful one. Is that fairly?
You gotta come up here.
Yeah.
Yes, it has the, it's the most comprehensive, it's the one that works with most other systems. The other proposal that we received, one was not a complete proposal, didn't have the actual accounting system in it. And the, the other one was, they were taking pieces from different companies and putting a hodgepodge of software together. Many of the municipalities around here are switching over to Munis as we speak. We're, as we, you'll see, we're recommending a lease purchase agreement, which everyone's doing as well, because just the cost of this, the system is huge, in my knowledge.
And it's very modern, and it has disaster recovery, and it has a lot of good tools built in, all one package. There is a third party that needs to go with it for the motor vehicles, but they're-
When you say third party, you mean-
Another vendor into wear. And the thing about that is Munis itself doesn't have that motor vehicle package, but they feel that this is their top vendor for that. And I would agree, for the state, they are licensed, and they are another fine package to supplement that. So it's going to be one comprehensive package. It wasn't a single vendor that did every single thing. Munis did ninety-nine percent, it just had that one piece it didn't do.
Counsel Thompson?
Steve, budget, budget committee expenses?
Yes.
Budget's always six hundred, we spent thirty-five bucks, we've, whatever, can, can we, does that need to be six?
I'll zero it out if you want to. There you go.
Same question, three hundred dollars for dues and subscriptions, where we've spent twenty-five?
Yeah, that actually is different now, because we didn't-
And I just, yeah?
We didn't have the, the individual who would be a member of GFOA, we have to kick in, since it was a contractor before.
Six hundred on equipment maintenance, what equipment is that?
Copiers. They have their own, they have the copiers up there for, as well as they have the printers for doing payroll, that's different inks, that kind of-
We cut that in half to three hundred, that's all we've needed, and are we sharing some of that equipment with the school, and?
We're not sharing equipment with the school.
Okay. But we haven't, we haven't spent that, so is there three hundred bucks we could tail off of that? And then the biggest one is the, the audit at thirty thousand. Previously, that was twenty-six, is that a contract or negotiated price?
There is a contract price, but also we need to do an actuarial study next year. Every three years, you have to do this other GAZB initiative, and it generally costs about twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars.
Okay. Generally, but-
Well, in the past, I've-
What did we pay previously?
I've never done one here, so it goes by the size, too, so I'm, I've paid close to five thousand dollars in other communities.
Okay, but haven't we done one here, where you could pull archival stuff? We've never done-
No. I don't have that history to know, and I don't, I don't think so.
If we had the history, it would be available to you?
I believe Matt himself did the actuarial study, so he might have some certification or way to do that. I am not able to do that.
We have not done it externally, this will be an external one.
Okay.
On the, on the, it's a software, did we, it, it's, it's sort of, it doesn't really save us money, but we are using the same software as the school, is that a fair statement?
Vendor.
Same vendor?
It will be, in the future, yes.
It, it's the comparison of using two Microsoft systems versus, these are two, an, an Apple and a Mac, Microsoft system.
Right.
The same company, just, just one, municipal, one school.
Right, so if, 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 if we want to use coverage from one, one, from the school side to town-
Not yet, because-
But if you wanted to, this would make it easier.
This would make it easier, it's something-
That's the exact point I was-
Because you gotta remember, our side is more on revenue, theirs is on expenses, because we take, ours is all billing and that kind of, so there's, there's gonna be training there.
Finance?
Any other places you can? About as tight as I can get?
Yeah.
What is the communication service in town? I'm sorry.
I believe that's the phone system.
That's all I think.
Oh, that's okay, go ahead.
Yes.
You'll bring your laptop up, because we probably have more questions.
We've got a couple more lights, so.
There's a lot more lights coming on. Is that what it is?
Yes, and it's, it's an allocation of a total, I believe. Go to, yes, because there's a piece that also gets charged over to IT, and then a piece into the finance. Historically, that's always just how it's been, so I kept that same logic.
Probably should, at some point in time, we should probably transfer that all to buildings and grounds, or IT.
I was gonna say, just because we've always done it that way, I'd like a little more thought into that, please.
Yeah.
Sure.
Hope for next year.
Counsel Weinstein?
So this is more of a general question, when looking at, you know, salaries, and, and just, I mean, having, having you in place was a big step for us. And, and now, as we kind of move forward, and looking at the departments, I guess I wonder, is there any, because that's sort of the bigger vision, right? Is that at some point, we'll share other personnel? And so I'm curious if there's any thoughts about that as we move forward, if it's looking like, you know, obviously, we don't want to start eliminating people, but if there's a retirement coming up, or anything like that, where we're at a point, if we're at a point where we might start to combine some of those personnel?
It's my intention that any time a vacancy on our side comes up, that we review what the school may have at the same time, and if we share a position, it would, that would be, yeah.
So there's nothing in the pipeline, though? That you, that you foresee? Okay. Okay. I like that we're thinking about it.
Counsel Cast?
Yeah, and to dovetail with that, that usually, you know, it's software has the potential to streamline those kind of things by sharing resources, or having people stop doing one thing and do something else, right? Is that also in the thought process there?
The hope is to make us more efficient, for sure.
Right, yes, in what we do. So there's an ROI on that software as well? Intended?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Because it'll also include building permits. So that will now be collected and be put into the system as well.
Is that gonna go to, so, salaries gonna offset part of that? Is that savings gonna go to salaries at some point? Just dovetail with, with Counsel Weinstein.
I guess I'm asking, could you clarify?
You can be more efficient, you know, with, the software's doing more of the work.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's software, I don't think efficiency will offset salary. It'll offset things that the employee, other things the employee could do. I think it would, you know, if we see enough, we're seeing an uptick in building permits, so it will offset, you'll be able to respond to those quicker if we have more automated.
You won't need more FTEs to get that done.
Right. Yeah.
So, I think, so we're finished with finance, moving to human resources?
Yeah, it's on your budget, originally proposed one million six forty-nine, nine-nine-nine, at a one point three-one percent increase. With the changes I recommended earlier, it's one million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, ninety-nine dollars, or a decrease of two point five-five percent.
Sort of, because we are, taking this opportunity with the department heads to ask the question. Are we, I know that, and, as I understand, school has spent some time sort of reviewing some of their HR-related policies, and some of the, has, have we, have we, do we have a timeline to do some of that on the town side?
We are.
Or do we, are we, is that something we're working on now?
Yeah, we, we're coming up with a master list, and we're also having council review it, town, the town attorney review it, to make sure we're up to date on all the policies.
Is that, is that part of your responsibility?
That's more of mine.
More, more you? Are there, you know, because when we, going back to when we started shared services, they, that was something that was consolidated up in, up in Cape Elizabeth, and they also were, had to, they, they had somebody more dedicated, I don't think, to make major policy decisions, but because there was a lot of onboarding, offboarding, a lot of that kind of work that went on, that was-
My understanding, they had an HR coordinator, HR director.
Yeah.
Which, at this point in time, falls on myself, the finance director, and the superintendent.
Right, because they don't have one for the school either.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
And is the work pretty, what, who are the three that you said?
Finance, myself, and, I mean, mainly superintendent and I for discipline and policy.
And to the extent I support them.
Right.
Yeah, and the administrative parts of it, you know, giving-
It's in the finance department.
It's in the finance, and that's working-
Benefit coordinating, that kind of, yeah.
Okay. I see nothing.
The next is building safety. It's a nine point nine-six percent increase, dues and subscriptions, it's just to reflect his actual training.
Okay.
And part-time salary is his salary. And she, this, the full time is shared between planning.
I see nothing.
Town clerk tax collector is at twelve point six-two. That's because we have more elections next year. We had one this-
I think three thousand thirty percent.
Where?
What?
What?
The percentage increase? Percentage increase, three thousand percent. I think we need to discuss that.
Okay, that's not on mine, that's not, there's a-
I don't know, my computer just froze up.
Okay.
Second time it's done this.
Um, no, it's twelve point six-two. Thank you for pointing that out. It's on the expense, cell spreadsheet.
Calculating.
Yeah, and it's only because of election. There's more elections next year.
So that's not, you know, it's-
It, it's the total. No.
Oh, it's at the bottom.
We'll, we'll deal with it.
I have that all booked in.
So that's it?
Thirty-nine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just to that point, do you have some kind of algorithm or formula for figuring out, you know, how much?
It's average.
Just the average?
Yeah. Try to determine how many ballots you may buy or not buy, and go from there.
The financial system will help put a budget into a-
Yeah. The next is welfare. I'm proposing a reduction of twelve point six-five percent to show actuals. And we've been doing really well, using nonprofits and-
Okay.
We're not, we're not, not giving services. We can't not give service.
Right.
We're just using our money differently, so.
Well, and the economy's been good.
And the economy's good, great.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that certainly helps it, that when you showed what the unemployment rate is.
Right.
It's the actual, it's twenty-five, seven-three-seven, twenty-seventeen.
Sorry?
In twenty-seventeen, he said in twenty-seventeen, it was twenty-five, seven-three-seven.
That's what they, yeah, right, at the end of the day, that's what they actually spend. Forty-one.
Should've hit the button.
Oh, you go ahead. And is the work pretty, who are the three that you said?
Finance.
Finance, myself, and I mean, mainly superintendent and I for discipline and policy.
And to the extent I support them.
Right.
Yeah, and the administrative parts of it, you know, giving.
It's in the finance department.
It's in the finance, and that's working.
Benefit coordinating, that kind of, yeah.
I see nothing.
The next is building safety. It's a 9.96% increase, dues and subscriptions. It's just to reflect his actual training. And part-time salary is his salary. And she, the full-time is shared between planning.
I see nothing.
Town clerk tax collector is at 12.62. That's because we have more elections next year. We had one this.
Three thousand thirty percent.
Where?
Percentage increase, three thousand percent. I think we need to discuss that.
Okay, that's not on mine, that's not, there's a.
I don't know, my computer just froze up.
Okay.
Second time it's done this.
No, it's 12.62. Thank you for pointing that out. It's on the sales spreadsheet.
Calculating.
Yeah, and it's only because of election. There's more elections next year. It, it's the total. No. We'll, we'll deal with it. So, that's it. Yeah. Yeah.
Just to that point, do you have some kind of algorithm or formula for figuring out, you know, how much?
It's average.
Just the average.
Yeah. Try to determine how many ballots you may buy or not buy and go from there.
Yeah.
Financial system will help put a budget into a.
The next is welfare. I'm proposing a reduction of 12.65% to show actuals. And we've been doing really well using nonprofits and. We're not, we're not, not giving services. We can't not give service. We're just using our money differently, so.
Well, and the economy's been good.
And the economy's good, great.
Yeah, I mean, that, that certainly helps it when you showed what the unemployment rate is.
It's the actual, it's twenty-five, seven-three-seven, twenty-seventeen.
Sorry?
In twenty-seventeen, he said in twenty-seventeen, it was twenty-five, seven-three-seven.
That's what they, yeah, right, at the end of the day, that's what they actually spend. Forty-one.
I should hit the button before I.
Are you finished now? You can, you can continue, okay.
But I can tell you that we're down from two thousand thirteen. Where it was one hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. So, we made, we've made some significant reductions and.
My good. So, and I know that we've, we've reduced it considerably in the time that I've been on the council. And I think every year I have said this, and I feel the need to say it again, is that there, while we do have low unemployment, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the numbers are this year, but there's been, there's been an increase, year by year by year, of the number of families using the food pantry. So, there's, it's not that there isn't a need. Now, for whatever reason, people aren't accessing the town welfare, and I don't know why that is, but then, there is a need, and, you know, we just, the, the church just opened a new thrift store and, so I don't want that to get lost in our discussion. The fact that we're not, we're not utilizing those funds as a town is, you know, it's beneficial to the town, for sure. And the need is, and maybe the needs are just being met elsewhere.
Yeah, that's exactly it. That's what I said, yeah. We're leveraging other nonprofits.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, yeah.
And then, and I just want to, you know, reiterate that. And so, I think, you know, for the millions of people watching this, you know, just to throw it out there that, make sure that we're supporting those organizations, whether it's through volunteerism or through donations, to make sure, because I know that the New Market Community Church does so much for this community, St. Mary's does so much for this community, that while we may not be spending our tax dollars, we should definitely keep that in mind as we, you know, determine our own personal donations and just making sure that we're supporting those organizations.
The next is assessing, which is a 2.29% increase, which is just contractual. We have our software upgrade this year that's contractual and they're a contractual increase. Legal, same thing, eighty-five thousand. Again, this is one of those line items that used to be in the one hundred and thirty thousand range a few years back. And now, with the, with the ability to have them on retainer, it's been a great savings. And the only reason why we have the extra is if there were certain cases that they do not cover, that we have to, they do outside of that.
Well, and I think it's worth pointing out again that I think beyond the, the one hundred and thirty thousand dollars reduced to eighty thousand, the other big savings is that it's happened several times just in the last year on committees I've either been part of or sat in on, as you say, let, you know, you don't think about it. If you're uncertain of what, you know, you have two differences of opinion on your committee and you're not sure where you stand legally on that, you say, well, let's get an opinion. And I think you don't have to think about the cost in that standpoint. But if, if the possibility is always there, getting the right opinion could save the town money down the road. And that's, that's an important benefit of this range.
That's been an example where efficiency has saved us money.
Right.
Efficiency, just because we're being efficient doesn't mean it's costing us less. And there's a few things that I have concerns about, but that's not one of them. That's been a great thing for us.
The next is the planning. And I think there's, which is a one thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. And the contracted services are really, which we, I took out, but is, is used. Is whenever the planning board says, well, we want this researched. Right now, they need to find another place in their budget or go over budget. Or even like when we have some of the economic development stuff that would hit, you'll see that later. I didn't increase the budget, but we overexpend it because committees request additional funds. I mean, at the bottom line of the budget, we're always safe, but it's not showing actual.
Connected services?
That's exactly it, consulting, consulting.
So, in this case, if there was something that, that, say she came in with a five thousand dollar request.
I'd say go for it. Yeah.
Because you feel like you can make it up in other ways. I mean, it's.
Tax maps is up too, Steve.
Yeah, that is, it's just contractual. That's what the regional planning is going to be charging starting next year.
Three hundred dollars more than previous.
Yeah. They've, they've gotten ahead. I think that DOT's cutting their funds, so they're going to make it up somewhere else. This is huge savings compared to what a private contractor would be. So, it's worth it.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, the next is conservation, no increase.
I was going to ask about postage on the last one, actually.
Well, okay.
Twenty-five hundred is the proposed, but last year we used a thousand thirty-seven. Is that, is there an anticipation that it's going to go up that much?
It's just, it's a, it's an estimate because we don't know what, how many cases we're going to have. And most of that comes back as revenue anyways because we charge the, the individuals.
Can we drop that to fifteen hundred?
That's what I was thinking on that, too, because that's five hundred over last year.
That's fine. Postage.
Yep.
Okay, the next is conservation, there's no increase. Economic development, I left it at twenty-five hundred. On which one? Yep.
Twenty-seventeen, it was actual expenditure, twelve hundred.
Yep.
That's in directly relation to the committee?
Yep.
I'd take that down.
I had to, well, I, that's not their actual costs. Because I took the, the amount that was paid to the consultants and put it in the town administrator's line. So, and the economic, it didn't, it wasn't reflected on economic development, it was reflected in the town administrator's budget. So, I overexpended mine. If anything, I think we should, in the future, we'll overexpend this one to show the actual cost.
Are they still meeting?
They are going to be.
Because that's, that goes back to our goals about trying to have.
Right now, I don't have any.
In certain these areas led more out of, right.
Right, one of the things that has been discussed is more promotional items.
That's what I was more wondering, if this was not the committee, if this is going.
This is not, this is not going to cover that. I could tell you that right here.
Well, no, I know, but it could be used for that.
It could be, yeah.
So, we're, what will cover that?
I'm going to have to find in the bottom line.
Okay.
I'm trying to get grants, there aren't any.
Just the committee, but in marketing, what we have to offer and satisfying our goals.
Because it does make sense to invest in this area, so.
All right, that makes me feel slightly better.
The next is debt service. Can't touch this one, it's down four point one five percent.
Can't touch this. Oh, come on, if I didn't sing it, you would have it.
The next is IT. The increase is twenty-three point four nine percent. This reflects the other portion of the implementation of the new software. Under software maintenance.
Bless us and save us.
Other than that, there's very little. I think that's.
Quick question. So, do we have plans for, you know, there's a line item for new equipment miscellaneous. You know, we don't, we're not contributing anything to the capital.
Nope.
Reserve fund for IT. I'm just sort of curious where we're at with that technology.
I've asked, I've asked the IT director to come up with a plan to, to use the capital reserve fund. The new equipment is basically replacing computers that crashed during the year and that kind of item. So, it's not a lot because computer prices are not the same. So, I've asked him for a plan.
What do we have in the capital reserve fund?
Thirty-five.
Okay. And we, we're not foreseeing any new, because I don't even think he, he submitted any requests for capital.
It's just all.
Because it's all equipment.
The problem was fifteen, twenty years ago, the thought of buying a computer was a capital purchase.
Right.
It's not a capital purchase any longer, it's a, a general doomy business.
Right.
Purchase. Because you, you used to, I remember in the days you'd buy a whole new computer system. Everybody would get a new computer and it'd be like fifty, twenty grand, and now it's like.
Phone systems.
Right.
You got your Centrix, you got your this, you got your.
Yeah. And now it's like, okay, my laptop crashed. Is it cheaper to buy a new one than fixing it? Because fixing it hourly rate, everything like that, that's cheaper to buy a new one.
So, is there, is there, would it make some sense over the long haul to take like, can you consolidate capital reserve funds, have one that would represent phone and computers and some of the security and all of them in one fund?
It does, this one techno, technology covers technology. Which is phones, those kind of items you can withdraw and get in there. We, because I looked it up when we did, it doesn't say just computers.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we would have to vote to set up a new reserve and then vote to defund the other ones and go, I mean, we've been through that.
Yeah.
Cluster and doing that in the last four, five years. We've done a ton of those. That's how you cleaned up the downtown and all of that stuff, yeah.
It's actually easier just to change the purpose of the fund. Which, right now, the funds are so vague, yeah, you can, you can use it for those things.
We've got to go to town meeting to do that, don't we? To change the purpose of a fund.
Yeah, but they're, they're already vague enough that.
You don't, there's no.
There's no need to right now, we can do it.
We can, we can use them in that way.
Right. Right, if you, if you say that it's, oh, it's for security, telephones, computers, that's it.
Right, no, I, no, I understand.
Yeah.
And, and we don't see, I guess, so I guess that's my question then. Are we not seeing any, like, we know, I don't know, how long will this software be good for? You know, like, at some point, we'll have to replace it, and that is a cap.
A lot of it actually is not, it's not, it's not the expense anymore because everything's going in the cloud. Everything is web-based for, as it relates to like desktop software. So, the costs there are reducing. So, this money is more when we have to replace networks for that, we'll have that there and come in and do it.
Okay.
More hardware.
Yeah. Big, larger hardware.
And the software is now as a service, so they do all the upgrades.
Right.
That's why it's so pricey upfront.
You know, on the, I guess, to, to the other side of it, if everything's going to the cloud and everything is going to the cloud, you don't need these PCs. You can get the Chromebooks, which, you know, three hundred bucks, whatever it is.
And that's why I've asked him for his plan.
A thousand, two thousand dollars.
I need a plan before we can, yeah, can get rid of it. Because he was, we're right, we're looking at actually dissolving it. But we've got to see what we need to purchase before we get there.
Where did the money come from, from redoing the security system?
Partially through dispatch, which is for security, and partially through technology.
Okay. So, there'll be those kinds of things that we can spend.
Oh, yeah.
To get them out of it, and that. That could be the solution.
So, the next is, we're going to jump a bit to grants. These are contributions to. Fifty. The largest increase is there's a seven thousand increase in the one that says festival support. They're trying to bring back a celebrate New Market Festivals, Old Home Day slash home.
Oh, there it is, sorry.
Type festival. And they were requesting additional funds to get that off the ground. Other than that, it's the New Market senior citizens that has dissolved, so they did not request any funds. Yeah, in coast, we actually made a deal that we cannot, if we're under a certain amount of money that we'd have to contribute, the maximum is twenty-one thousand. So, we're going to be at twenty-one for a long time. It's like a maximum, minimum type deal. We were contributing a lot more in the past, and I said, we'll just leave at this and we'll all be happy.
That's that transportation system?
Bus.
In the Hantap Association, that's, again, that, I think that the Tiger thing, and we are, you, you have it in the budget to spend from capital reserve to do needed work on that building.
Correct, they don't have enough money in their funds at this time to do it.
I'm sorry, what is it again?
The old, the Tiger. Firehouse, yeah.
There was no expenditure for seventeen.
They haven't requested.
Okay, but we still have, it doesn't go away.
Yeah, it doesn't go away. Then the next page is social service grants. Which is, it was requested at fifty-eight thousand, I reduce it to fifty-one-four. It's an increase of eighteen percent because there were three new agencies that have requests. They applied at all, we reviewed the applications, they meet the requirements, they're having, serving New Market residents, being nonprofit. Trying to move the last one. We sit, we look at their financial audits, so it's not a, yeah.
Can you refresh my memory on the, the linked together one, it's that they didn't request it, right?
They don't really want it, right.
Okay.
And the three that requested a Crossroads House, which is the homeless shelter. New Generation Health is for the homeless shelter for expecting mothers and childrens. And One Sky Community is for disabled, and they are actually, do have a location in New Market.
Really?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that sort of is the balance to the fact that our, our welfare spending has gone down, but we're, we're working with, I mean, well, I, but it is, I mean, that's the way I, at least it, to me, it's that a lot of those services are being operated, offered by organizations such as this, so.
These are all fairly specialized. I mean, so I have a couple of questions, if I could, about, or, I'm sorry, he needs light was on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Thompson.
Rockingham County, all it says is Rockingham County Nut.
Oh, that's nutrition meals on wheels.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Rockingham County Nuts, okay.
I was quite sure that wasn't what I.
Yeah.
Okay. A Safe Place, twelve hundred dollars. Where is that, what do they do?
It's for battered individuals.
I suppose of, of the new ones, like you said, that, you know, they serve New Market residents, but I'm not sure about Crossroads House.
We send individuals there.
But if they're homeless.
No, that's what we do.
I'm not meaning to make.
No, 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 that's what we do.
I just don't understand it, how are you a New Market resident if you're homeless? I, I don't know.
If, if, say you get tossed out of your apartment for not paying rent, you are now the responsible, the town is now responsible for you. So, we have to provide them with housing. So, what we do is try, we send them the Crossroads House or other housing facility throughout the state.
Yeah.
And that's.
So, that would go to Dale, your question, our welfare department is, is the first source for a lot of people for information, but the welfare, town welfare department doesn't necessarily provide the services. So, we refer them to some of these other, other agencies and things like, things like that that are easier to, to set up. But I guess my biggest question is, as it always was, Lamprey Health Center? Ten thousand for what? I mean, they.
They provide us services, but they also get eighty thousand dollars in free taxes.
Exactly. So, I'm just going to go on the record, is registering that I, I get it, I try to get it. But in balancing the needs of everybody, I'm happier with some of the other bits. I think eighty thousand dollars in, in tax credit is a heck of a nice thing, and I, I think that that's enough.
So, Council Cast?
So, the three new ones are at the bottom, correct?
Yes.
But Area Homemakers is gone up to five thousand, but nothing previously? Just wanted to.
That was a.
That is.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't submit in time last year. They've always received a contribution from us. It helps seniors.
Okay, so it's a senior program?
Yeah.
Council Wyson.
I have a few comments. So, one is that I imagine that, you know, then, again, if we're talking about with like the overlay district that we just approved, things like services to seniors will go up. As far as the Crossroads House, I know that when I.
Can I stop?
Oh, yeah.
I want to correct that one. This is for those who can't afford it? If they're in an assisted living facility like that, they would not go to these services? It would be part of where they, they are. I just, because when we started discussing that, I just want to get that.
That's a good point.
Out of there, yeah.
With the Crossroads House, I worked at a homeless shelter in Manchester a number of years ago. And when I did that, one of the first things, you know, we would, people would come to us and one of the first questions that we would ask when, you know, like, walked on our. And when I did that, one of the first things, you know, we would, people would come to us and one of the first questions that we would ask when, you know, like, walked on our doors, where are you from? And have you contacted your town's welfare department? So having that as a, if we're, if we're getting people to Crossroads House and they're accepting our individuals, um, it's a, it's a pretty.
Right.
Good benefit.
Right.
For, for us. Um, Lamprey Health, I, I, I support that. I think that that's really important. Um.
You support the amount here?
Yeah. I'm curious why, oh, one quick question. Who is the department head proposed? Is that you? Are you cutting your own budget?
Uh, no, 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 no. I usually look at, I usually look at what they.
What they request? Okay. So, um, cause there were a couple that weren't quite the same and I'm just kinda curious. So like Meals on Wheels, they requested sixty-three hundred and we're providing six is just based on past numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I guess that was the only one, right? Is that the only one? That's a, that's a change?
Yeah, most of them state level.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
I think, so there are no more. The only thing that was, uh, that was sort of, I'm not, cause I think we do these kind of a motion. We had one proposal to eliminate the grant to Lamprey Health Center and another comment, uh, not in favor of that. You wanna poll the, we could poll that and that would be the only thing.
Sure.
So the, the question to ask everybody is, do you, are you in fa-
Just say yes or no. It's, yeah.
You're in favor of the grant to Lamprey Healthcare Center?
Can I ask a que- I don't quite understand the factors in the motion.
Okay. In the years, Lamprey Healthcare is a large facility in town. They also do not pay property taxes. There's questions on whether or not they are a non, a nonprofit under the law to get property, do not have to pay property taxes.
Correct.
As of right now, the cases are in their favor. So in return, we're, so we're giving them eighty thousand dollars in non-taxing, cause they've got that big facility. That's what it's worth. And in addition, they come in and ask us for ten thousand dollars contributions to run their programs. So you're actually giving them ninety thousand dollars a year, not ten thousand. Two years ago, I, I eliminated it in my proposed budget and it went all the way through to the town meeting to cut the ten thousand dollars because of that reason. There was a petition warrant article and they raised the money back in. So ever since, we just kept it in there. We put it back in the operating budget.
Council Weinstein.
Um, my understanding of that, of that time, that those monies specifically went for, toward transportation services to seniors. I mean, there were multiple, a couple of presentations that were done at the time. Um, and I don't recall all of the specifics, but that was kind of the gist, is that it went toward transportation services. To help people get to appointments and, you know, get out of the house, get to grocery shopping, um, whatever the case may be.
No hope of them paying taxes?
I don't see anything at this point.
Not exactly a nonprofit. Okay.
So do we, uh, do you wanna just leave it as it is here or do you want, do you wanna poll the council?
Do what you wanna do. You know what my vote is. I'm not in favor of it.
Let's, let's just poll the council. I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I will say up here that I'm gonna vote to keep it in. I think if we voted to take it out, it would probably end up back in there with.
So Pike says yes, Weinstein says yes, Bowden?
Yes.
Cast?
Can I abstain?
I think.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not even a, it's not even a vote.
I really don't have a.
It's just a poll, okay.
Have, say no opinion in.
No opinion.
Okay. Thompson says withdraw.
No opinion.
Leave it.
Okay, so it stays. Okay. So, here's the question for the council right now. We have one budget left. They are not scheduled to be until one. It's the library. They're down twenty-five, six percent. Is it something that we need to question them or do you just want to?
You're, in this case, the town administrator and the department head have exactly the same number.
And I don't, and the reason why is I don't touch their budget.
Right.
They're a separate entity, so it automatically goes forward with my, as my recommendation.
She can't come in earlier?
We can recess now and I can see if I can get her in. But she usually brings the entire board.
Right.
Oh.
I'm gonna say personally, I'd like, I'd really like to be there and with the council's indulgence, I apologize, but my store is closed today. Um, so I will do what I need to do, but it's, it's really frustrating when I'm turning away customers to be here waiting for an hour. So I understand it is what it is and if I can't stay, cause, you know, everybody can't change to accommodate me, I would like to be out of here as soon as I can.
You, let me give you overall where we are for the budget as of now?
Yeah. It's up to the rest of the council. I mean, you know.
I mean, bottom line, um, tax rate wise, if everything was all up, all in the same, it would be a twenty-six cent increase. Or, um, overall expenditure increase of four point five seven percent. So it'd go from six dollars and thirteen cents to six dollars and thirty-nine cents. That's where we are.
Council Cast?
Um, I've, I've got, I'm confused about the interior wall painting and repairs.
Oh.
Because that was.
Oh, with the library?
Yeah. What the thing, the, the law for the library, it's a, it's a old law. We only maintain those things from the walls on the outside, the building, that kind of item. They maintain their inside.
Then why did, this is from the CIP.
Yeah, cause he, he's still helping them with it.
Okay.
We're not, it's not, it's not gonna be not done.
Okay.
It's just that we don't have control over that. They do.
This doesn't address fungibility.
Where, where does that, is this amount going in the budget? Is it in the library's budget?
I, I.
I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify.
Are you asking, is it gonna get done?
Because, cause originally this was in the CIP, so I interpreted, is it.
They're part of the CIP as well.
But it's their bud.
It's theirs, yeah.
Theirs, okay. All right, just one.
Yeah. That's part of that ten thousand that they requested for contribution to Capital Reserve. Yeah.
Kinda like the schools in the CIP. Sorry, I just put a chocolate in my mouth. The school is a part of the CIP process also, but it's not a town budget.
Okay.
Similar?
Yeah.
Kind of?
Yeah.
But with the library and the ten thousand telegra- I mean, in, in essence, the town, if they use it, if they use town funds on the inside, does that skirt the law?
No.
Do you know what I mean? I mean, it kind of is.
It, no, it's, it's no. It's not the same as the school in that situation.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Are they part of the phone system? No, as of now, no. They have a right over their own systems like that.
What was the maintenance that cost them to go over budget last year? What was the issue?
They had some issues with their roof. And let me, let me also say some, let the council understand this. Council does not have authority over the individual line items of the library trustees. There's a sep- separate independent board. They have it. You only have the bottom line.
Look, I guess like the concern there was that they were so over budget last year, but I guess that was a one-time repair.
Okay.
They had some funds to fund things in there, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's a little bit because of the way it's all structured with the trustees and we do the outside, they do the, it's, it's a little bit, how it all works.
So, so we have authority over the bottom line. So, so is that what the, the budget, not the expenditure is what we, what we provide them for money or do we?
We provide them with exactly through the, the number that's approved.
So, so if their actual expenditure was three eighty-three and we budgeted three fifteen.
They, they tapped into their capital. They have their own reserves.
Right. So the amount we're providing is three fifteen.
Right.
And, and we're proposing to essentially flat fund that.
Correct.
Three fifteen again.
Correct.
And we don't have much authority to change the individual.
You do not.
I mean, it usually would, I, I would like them to have their chance here, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's worth anybody's time to have them come in for a couple of minutes when I, 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 I think it's, it's unlikely.
Is everybody fine with that number?
If we're fine with that.
It's actually a reduction, yeah.
Yeah. I, it just seems unlikely we're gonna do anything different if this does.
Okay. So I'll give her a call as soon as we're done.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
And I didn't say I was, but I'm clearly not gonna win, so.
What, what would you like to do?
Um, I don't know, just something sticking in my craw regarding some of the maintenance and, and again, we can't address how they spend things. But because we do make this donation, I feel like we ought to have some say over how the money is spent. And there was, um, there was a time where we, you know, gave funds under the guise of, let's say, the building was falling down and needed, needed repairs, which we all agreed with and whatever. And then unfortunately, when it gets to, and, and it could happen with any department, I suppose, the funds for which, uh, which were supposed to go toward the building falling down in the Chicken Little thing, um, didn't go to that purpose. Um, and I didn't, I just really haven't forgotten about that. Um, you know, if I come to you and say, oh my God, my house is falling down, I need a new roof, I need a new roof. And, you know, you guys haven't invested in my house and that sort of thing, and then I turn around and get a trip to Florida with the money, how would you feel? You know what I mean? And, and so it's kind of rubbing me the wrong way. I, I know that we have to fund the library. They could, the library's great. I hang out there. It's, that's all great. But I'm not real thrilled with administration here on this that I don't, I, I'm not saying I'm, you know, we're gonna cut it in half or no, I don't wanna fund the library. We, and we can't legally do that. Um, but I just, I think there are funds on their own side, in their own capital reserve funds. They do a great job at fundraising. I don't want the town to abdicate total responsibility here. Um, but based on those numbers and whatever, I'd put out there, you know, not the three fifteen, two ninety, two ninety-five, just, you know, a tick, a tick less.
Um, so.
I think they need to be responsible stewards of our grants too. And I, I'm just feeling in that incident that that didn't happen.
Well, I guess I would answer that in, uh, two ways. I'm not opposed to doing what you said. And I'm also, I don't know that, you know, and I don't wanna, you know, it's one thing when you cut their budget and then said, but, and we don't need to talk to you, we're just cutting it. So that's kind of a tough thing.
Right.
Um, on the other hand, I would say I'm, at this point, more interested in, um, you know, I was thinking about, is there a work? Wait.
Now, Carrie, come now. She's here to discuss the budget.
Perfect.
You're early.
I am. Are you?
We're, we're discussing you right now.
Oh, you are?
You're the last one, so we're discussing whether or not, no, come up.
We're discussing whether or not to discuss, cause, cause.
Cause we're, we're ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
Mayor, Rod and Mary wanted me to call them if we were early.
Just, let's just go to conversation now because it's.
Yeah. All right.
So.
So what I was talking about, uh, just to catch you up with, we had one counselor that said, you know, they, they, they're just looking to see if we can cut a little bit in that grant and, and hadn't got to a specific amount. And so that was just put on, that was just brought up as a possibility. And what I was about to say is, um, that, um, I think, I think one of the things, and maybe this is the time to talk about it a little bit more, is I, I am interested in seeing, you know, how we can. I know you have the independence you have, but the, the town has now hired a, a, um, you know, a buildings expert. You know, we have a facilities director and it's sort of a, it's a different, it's not related in any way to the idea of whether or not we're gonna fully fund your request or, or fund it slightly less. It's related to how we work together in the future and whether, whether the facilities director will be able to help you with some of the, with the facilities. Those are really two different topics, but I think those are the two main things that I'm interested in talking about and.
Sure. Council Thompson adds something to them as well.
Yeah, I mean, they can, they can kind of dovetail. If, if we can help, it's not that we, as the town or Greg, can't handle some of the interior things. But again, um, what I did say was that the library and the trustees have been great about fundraising. You've got, you know, your own capital reserve funds and things like that. Um, and when the town, in my view, gives a grant like this, a legally, we do support the library. But also when we give a grant like this, it's in good faith that it will be used for the purposes, um, that are outlined in the request. And it is very frustrating to me when that doesn't happen. Um, and I feel that trust is, is eroded there. So, um, I'm the one proposing to cut just a bit here. Um, to say, you know, even if it's two ninety, two ninety-five, three hundred thousand, um, we can't control how you spend each line item. But the discussion last year was, and, and it was a good, it was a good plea for funds to fix up a, a aging building, a failing building. You had building maintenance issues. Um, and when all the funds that are given under a grant, um, from the town last year, like this one, don't go to the building maintenance issues that we were told were so important, um, yeah, trust erodes a little bit. So that's our discussion here.
Okay. I'm a little confused. Oh, good, here's Rod.
I don't know how much I can.
There was a.
I kinda came into the middle.
The trustees awarded a significant pay increase for employees.
Um, actually, it was for four part-timers. It came to five thousand dollars for four part-timers. Um, and that was to bring them up closer to the surrounding communities. We're still lower than Durham Dover. Um, we also, we run our library on three point two full-time equivalents. And, sorry, I have to get my glasses.
Steve, we didn't, we didn't hear about, we need to bring employees up to a certain pay rate. We didn't hear about that.
Yeah.
Well, the money was, we, I'm sorry, we had planned for it a couple of years before. The money was in the, um.
Council's talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We weren't told that that was in the plan, that that needed to happen as with any other town department, I suppose. Um, we were told that the library has not had funds to do needed maintenance and repairs. And that was the basis for approving the grant last year. Regardless of the money and how it was spent or the dollar amount, um, if we are told that there hasn't been enough money to do building repairs and then any portion of that goes to give employees a raise, I feel that that is a breach of trust.
Okay. Um, the money in the building maintenance, if, I'm sorry, if I can try to clarify, didn't go towards the, um, the raises. That money was already in the part-time salary line item. There was money in building maintenance that we moved into salaries, but that's because we hired a cleaning person for fifteen hours a week. That's why we moved a big chunk from building maintenance up into part-time salaries. We don't contract out part, we don't contract out the cleaning anymore. That's why we moved a big chunk into part-time salaries. The rest of the money actually already is in there. If you look at the part-time salary line item for the last two or three years, it was not always totally spent. In the last year, it's taken me four years, three years to actually get the right number of people employed. Now we don't have anyone working in the library alone anymore. We did. So honestly, that five thousand something dollars that went to the part-time raises, uh, was already there. And if you do look back over the years, you'll see that there was some extra every year in part-time salaries.
Then why was it necessary to move any funds out of building maintenance to give the cleaning person?
For the cleaning person. The cleaning person's fifteen hours a week, three hours a day.
Okay.
Um, and that was contracted out before. We've actually saved money by hiring a person versus contracting.
I agree.
I was just getting ready to say that our full-time equivalents for what we run the library on. I picked these communities just because they were similar, you know, population closest comparison I could get. Seabrook, who is eight thousand eight hundred people, they run their library on five point six eight people. We run Newmarket at three point two six. Wigan, Stratum, um, population seven thousand something. They have five full-time equivalents. You know, again, we're three point two six. Plastow, seven thousand people, they have five point eight five, uh, people that run the library. Kingston has four point two. Durham is five point three eight. So we're running it on, I don't think we could go any lower than we do. Otherwise, we would have somebody working alone.
What are their total budgets versus your total budget?
Uh, I didn't write that down, but Stratum, I think, is close to five hundred thousand. I didn't get that down. I could.
And what's your total budget?
Three fourteen. That's the grant. That's our operating budget, the three fourteen. I do know that we take less amount for salaries out of our total budget than some of those surrounding libraries.
You okay? Counsel Bowden?
Looking at the line for building maintenance. Budget was twenty-three thousand for twenty seventeen, it was one oh five five ninety. What did the delta of eighty-two five ninety, I think that's what the delta is? What did that?
I'm sorry, could you, I didn't understand that.
Sorry, the line item for building maintenance.
Yeah.
Twenty-three thousand was the original budget for twenty seventeen, came up to one oh five five ninety, I believe. It's a delta of eighty-two thousand five ninety.
What's that? It's.
I think it's a delta of eighty-two thousand five hundred ninety dollars.
What was the extra amount?
Over budget.
Oh.
What was that used for?
Um, that was the boiler. We had an emergency with the boiler failing, it was leaking. The HVAC units were breaking constantly. You know, every time thermal came to fix it, it was about a thousand dollars. We had money in our reserve fund. I talked, we talked to Matt Angel about it and he said, yes, we do the boiler, you know, it has to come out of the current line item of, out of the fiscal year. But with the intent that we knew we were going to go over at the end of the year and at that point, it would eat into our reserve funds, which is what it did.
Accounting. That didn't.
Yeah, accounting wise, you have to show it as an expense. So, on the flip side though, the reserve fund was reduced, we don't show that on, in the budget.
Okay. So, if that eighty-two thousand wasn't used, it would, your actual expenditure would have been around three hundred?
If the eighty-eight thousand hadn't been used?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two, yeah, we would have been right about.
Three hundred thousand.
Correct.
What do you mean?
You expended three hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars in that year. You expended eighty-eight thousand on a boiler, it's less than what you expended.
So, it would have been three hundred thousand three sixty-eight.
Correct.
I believe.
Let me, I'll explain this, that what they, what the library does, and this is everywhere, it's not just ours, is after the grant is done, the remainder goes into their, into their fund balance, because they're allowed to keep a fund balance.
Okay. Remainder goes, thank you.
So, what's the total of that now?
Zero.
If you took three hundred and eighty-eight minus the three eighty-two, two.
So, there's no fund balance, there's no library reserve funds?
They've used their fund balance, um, because they.
Carrie, come to him, Mike.
Oh, sorry. They used their fund balance, from what I understood, um, there was an agreement that this, I thought it was a roof, but I guess.
Oh, there was, it was basically, excuse me, it was basically the boiler. There was, um, after they did the roof, there was some additional flashing that needed to be done and the trustees voted again, take it out of building maintenance with the intent that it would come out of the fund balance, which it did. The fire alarm panel went, again, same thing. So, it was the roof, fire alarm panel, the boiler, I think that was it.
So, they had remaining at the end of the year about fifteen thousand dollars in the fund balance. But at the start of the new year, there's still money owed back to the general fund because they over expended. They over expended, there was a, um, a transfer of sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. And when you move money from one account back, you always have to go back to the original budget. So, part of that overrun was covered by trustee funds, sixty-three thousand nine hundred. But there was still a twenty-one thousand dollar amount owed at the end of the year. And there's a plan to pay that back. We were, just this week, we were talking about it, I hadn't had a chance to even talk to Steve about this yet. But we were waiting for the final audited numbers, so I knew to be sure what that amount was that was owed. So, there's a plan to repay twenty-one thousand back to the general fund.
Actually, I have the check, I brought it up yesterday, but nobody was.
And that's about the eighty thousand that owed man.
Yeah.
So, it's the sixty-three nine came from their trust and then the rest came out of the fund balance.
Counsel.
But there was an agreement before I came, I guess, that they would, um, be permitted to overrun, to use up their fund balance. Generally, you want to keep a fund balance, but, um, I don't.
All set. Counsel Bowden, you're all set?
Yes.
Counsel Weinstein?
I just want to start with a comment, and that I've noticed, um, probably in the last year, maybe even less, like the amount of programming that you've added to the library and I just, I think it's great. And I haven't personally been able to take part in many of the presentations, but, um, I, I've just seen more and more and it's really nice to see. I think it's a vital part of our town. So, um, and then I had a question about the roof and, because I think, is it, was it just one winter that we've gone through now with the wires? And I'm curious how that worked out last year? And.
The wires aren't working that well, but the roof has been repaired.
Right.
Through the CIP last year. We had the big roof project, so that whole side of the building now is nice new roof. And I expect that we don't really need the wires that much anymore. Over the front door, we still use them, they're, they're better than.
Better than nothing?
Yeah.
It's safety.
Yeah.
I mean, we use them.
Did you go through the last winter season with the new roof or was that after the?
Uh, we went through one winter.
And so it.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, did.
Of course, it was a mild winter.
Right.
But.
But you didn't have any issues?
No.
Good.
No, I mean, we've had some real, you know, nothing leaks anymore.
Good.
It's great, yeah.
Thank you.
So, the last thing I was going to touch on is the, um, uh, you know, my perspective is that, that Greg is the facilities director, has been able to, uh, look over the building a little bit with you and stuff like that. I, I would just be interested in your, uh, sense of how he might be able to help you guys in the future. Do you feel like it will be useful to have him in place and?
Definitely, I wish he had been here, you know, three years ago when all of this started, it would have been wonderful. You know, all the big major projects now are really done, the windows, the repointing, the roof. Of course, there's still old roof there, but according to the roofing experts, it should be okay for, you know, several more years. Roof repoint, you know, granite repointing, the roof, the boiler's done, the windows are done, the carpet was, that was before I started as director, but it was in the last five years. The only thing really left is the interior painting, you know, unless something else crops up, but, um, yeah, I think working with Greg will be, be wonderful. Like I said, I wish, I wish he was here four years ago. So, and he has come to the library, we've gone through the whole thing together. And of course, he found other, little myriad of little things that need to be done, but, you know.
Sort of preventing.
Exactly, yeah.
So, Counsel Thompson, I, I don't know, do you, you've had some more information or you, do you have a proposal you want to make or what do you want to do? Just leave it alone?
I've said my piece, I think people know where I stand on that. And again, I don't have any, um, I don't have any delusions that it would pass the council, so it is what it is.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to change what the town administrator has proposed here?
Library proposed.
Well, you, but.
I don't propose one. This is the only one legally, I, I can't change theirs.
All right, would anybody that else that wants to change what the library has proposed? So, I think, I think, I think we leave it as it is then.
Okay. So, counselors. Bottom line. While we've increased expenditures because of the increased cap, contribution to capital reserve funds, we also increased revenues at the same time. My proposed budget was eleven million eight fifty-nine nine thirty-one, so the town council will be twelve million forty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars. Tax wise though, it will be six dollars and thirty-nine cents per thousand. This is using today's numbers, uh, which would be a twenty-six cent increase. It's, yeah, because it's, um.
Will you give me those numbers again, I'm sorry.
Uh, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, uh, which, all of them?
All of them.
So, my proposed budget is eleven million eight hundred fifty-nine thousand nine thirty-one.
Yep.
The new one, it's going to be twelve million forty-two thousand seven thirty-one. Less the additional revenues, the net town appropriation is where you compare. My net town appropriation is four million eight hundred sixty-two thousand two seventy-five. Town council's is four million seven nine ninety-five thousand seventy-five dollars, that's what you raise taxes on. For total, the tax rate will be now six dollars and thirty-nine cents per thousand, or an increase of twenty-six cents. So, on Wednesday evening with the resolution, I'm going to ask for an amendment to the number of twelve million forty-two thousand seven thirty-one. And then the council votes it up and down and that will also be the recommendation to go to the budget committee.
So, there is nothing else to be done?
That's it.
Meeting stands adjourned then.
Well done, Deeps.
Good job.